Okay. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on Wednesday at ten. And I'll just jump right into new business. If other people join us on the call, I will let you know who is on the call and in the room with us virtually. Right now it's Deb Dunlap is with us virtually, so I just wanted to, I'll keep you all surprised of that if it changes. So under new business, Robert is with us this evening because we do have the ratification of DPW seasonal staff. As you know, this was a topic of conversation last Wednesday, and we had appointed three seasonals last Wednesday to help with the work. And I believe we have in front of us one seasonal, is that correct? So, Robert, if you wanted to talk a little bit about that?
So, we have one seasonal right now that we're ready to hire, and so an interview by a arts woman, Steve, and they feel that he is a good candidate. He's gone for returns from previous seasons, so we're a little bit aware of that, but he's ready to go. And you have another one that we are not considering right now, but they're still in the process, so this would be the fourth seasonal that we have.
And I think you mentioned that there's a budget for five, no more than five seasonals, to get us through the work, and that is also what the staff has said would help to do the work. Okay. So I will read the letter that is before us. Dear Chairman Hoyt, this letter is to advise the Board of Selectmen that subject to the Board's ratification as provided in Section 10 of the Town Charter. I've appointed Marcus Leek, is that how I say it? Okay. To the position of seasonal laborer for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Leek will work to support the DPW to provide vegetation management and other services to the town of Adams. Upon your ratification and the passing of all hiring requirements, Mr. Leek will begin this position effective June 11, 2020, at the DPW seasonal labor rate of $12.75 per Any questions or a motion?
I make a motion to ratify Marcus Leek, your position as seasonal laborer for Department of Public Works, at a rate of $12.75 an hour effective June 11, 2020.
Okay. I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Rick. Any discussion?
Just a question. I think that I read Steve Scrackey, This Is an Adams Resident? And how old is he?
I don't know his exact age, but he's over eighteen.
Okay, so he's a younger guy, in other words. Okay.
I don't think we can actually ask that in an interview, right? We can't ask them these days, or do they, they don't put it on the application, do they? I think they fill out their birth date after the fact. That's why we're going to know.
Is he going to put it on there?
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Carrying none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or an abstention? That is unanimous. Robert, you're still with us? So I will let you talk to us about the wastewater treatment plant operator one. On our agenda, it is to ratify the appointment of Brian Marco, but maybe you want to walk us through that.
Yep. So, our wastewater treatment plant has a requirement for seven staff members. It's really a requirement that we have to add. We've had some bad luck there. We actually lost a staff member in October, that actually deceased capacity. And that complicated thing. We also had a staff member over there who was basically on medical leave for an extensive period of time, so we've been down the two men now, so this will get us back to that level. And as you remember, we hired a flyer, a staff member, a couple months ago. This will bring us up to full capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, the operator one position.
Thank you. I will try to hold on to the pieces of this paper a little bit more. Okay, thank you, Robert. Appreciate that. Thank you. Jay. So, the letter that is in our packet. Dear Chairman Hoyt, this letter is to advise the Board of Selectmen that subject to the Board's ratification as provided in Section 10 of the Town Charter. Brian Marco has been appointed to the position of operator one for the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Marco has extensive experience in electrical and mechanical skills that have made him the best qualified candidate for the operator one position at the wastewater treatment plant. He will be acquiring all necessary licenses and will begin this position effective June 11, 2020, at the wastewater D-12 step one rate of $18.30 per hour upon successful completion of all hiring requirements, respectfully submitted by Jay Greentown Administrator. What is the Board's pleasure?
I'm making a motion to ratify the appointment of Brian Marco in position of operator one for the wastewater treatment plant.
I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
Scrackey.
A second by Jim. Any discussion? Carrying none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or an abstention? That is unanimous. All right. Thank you, Robert. In your packet, you have a copy of Forest Park's full outdoor dining application. That is not what is to be looked at by this Board, that we gave that authority to Inspection Services. However, the last page of your packet is the temporary license for their alcohol, and that is what is before us. And it looks like that this should be the very latter page. However, you can see what, the nice example of what they're completing for the dining application is how that process has moved forward. They have already been inspected and are operating with food service for that. However, the temporary license here in front of us is, it was brought to our attention that their current license does not cover the porch. They have alcohol, so for them to have full outdoor dining that they wish to have, they would like to amend their liquor license to include the covered porch. So I'll draw your attention to the center part of the temporary license paper, where it talks about the description of outdoor premises, and it talks about the covered porch on the attached diagram for maximum capacity of thirty-nine people, and that there would not be any seating on the grass. So this is to cover their alcohol consumption on the porch. And again, as we talked about on Monday, this would be through November first, or it expires on November first, per the state's guidance that was provided to us. This is a local licensing authority decision. It does not need to go forward to the ADCC from here. We just need to notify the ADCC that we amended their license, if that is the Board's pleasure to see. If the club would like to go forward with the full process, we will certainly help them to do that, to amend their license going forward. But this is for their dining options. So what is before us is to approve the amended liquor license to include outdoor service for Forest Park Country Club.
Now, the diagram in the case, I think you indicated that it was just for porch?
Correct.
And that rolled off lawn as?
So they submitted this as their plan.
Right.
It was inspected.
Right.
And Inspection Services told them that they would not be able to use the lawn, that they would only be able to use the porch.
Yes.
And so that is why their capacity was reduced, because I think they initially put in that their capacity would be fifty-five, and it was reduced to thirty-nine per Inspection Services. And so the porch would just have alcohol. Yeah.
I have a question. How did this come about? I mean, I, I don't drink, but I've gone up to country club before, and I mean, people have been drinking on their porch for a hundred years.
So we're going to find that there's quite a few of our businesses who have expanded to outdoor consumption over the last several decades, and the paperwork doesn't reflect that. So this will be a time where we can actually clean up that paperwork. This is one of those cases.
How did, how did it originally come to the forefront that they didn't have that particular license to drink on the porch? How did that come forward, and how did we hear about that?
Sure. So last week, when we knew that the restaurants were going to be able to open for outdoor seating, we started to pull all of the licenses and all of the permits that our restaurants have, to start looking at what they have, and to start thinking creatively. And it was brought forward by staff that there are a couple of places that currently their license does not cover outdoor, and this is one of them. We did notify Forest Park to get their paperwork in order when they submitted this, and we are notifying the others as well. So we will see a number of pieces in the next couple of days, and we will work with them to get it permanently corrected as we go forward. But it's just, it's decades. It's, I guess it's just been going on.
It's not that easy.
Yeah. I know. I was surprised, too.
Golf tournaments up there. I always think that.
I was surprised, too. So this is a good time to correct any paperwork that needs correction.
They're good for, they're good until November first under this action tonight, but in order for them to continue beyond that, they have to apply for a permanent amendment at some point.
Right.
Excuse me, our first amendment here.
Okay.
Now, if you used that way at our last meeting, if they applied for a permanent license next year, that does not apply to the fees being waived. Does not apply.
Correct. Correct. This amendment.
Just for this, for November first.
Correct. Yes. Yep. And they may hold off on the permanent paperwork because of change of officers and so forth, and that paperwork that they would have to do. They would, they're in a position where I think they would have several amendments to their license, because they're a club and they have to submit the officer stuff, and they have a change of manager application.
Do you have to say, do they have a manager up there now?
Yes, they do have a manager, and they are working on their change of manager application as well.
Is the one to apply for this?
It is.
Because they didn't have a manager. Is it John?
Yeah, this is the, the club that has applied for this. He's a club officer.
Is he the bar manager?
No, the bar manager is Chad Elbiger, with Blue Card still helping him. That is one thing that they're cleaning up. Yep.
I think a motion approved. The amendment to liquor license to include outdoor service for Forest Park Country Club at forty-one Forest Park.
I have a motion by Rick. I have a second by Jim. Any other questions or discussions?
Just a question we asked in hours of operation.
Yep.
And that says before midnight. Normally, when it's doing the following, everyone in our establishments, it's a body fair that's outside, you know, being in Forest Park, I'm not going to talk about it, but I need loud noise that happens, so I'm trying to catch this to bang out. This is midnight here, and then you get the body fair, I'm not going to talk to those troubled neighbors, I don't know if it's any other area. So midnight, is that something, because this is, this is kind of new, if it's outside.
Right.
Is that going to cause any concern with neighbors? Because people are all, I would say, for example, Forest Park, that's a little dirty, having a good time, having to clean the tables, a little loud, we got a ten o'clock noise or it was here in town, so I'm just curious, you know, for me, probably the area is not going to be a problem there, we're going to keep it under control. Body fair is, doesn't have much problem at all. I don't know who else has food, I'll figure out, maybe those are the neighbors. So that's just a question I have, maybe trying to think about going forward. But otherwise, I'm not buying.
Okay. I will ask, I will ask Inspection Services to take a look at that, because that's on the application that they are approving on this time.
From a legal standpoint, all the actions that the Board does, it amends the scope of the premises where it can deliver the alcohol service.
Yep.
So technically speaking, they should already be permitted on their existing permit for a service anytime. In a perfect world, without the correction that we have to make, they have technically been serving outside until that original time on their, their liquor license. That's the problem we have with what is an antique license essentially, and now that we're looking at it, as we stated, now all these other issues are starting to preoccupy. So if, for example, on their original license, it said you can serve until eleven thirty P.M., your actions can only authorize those outdoor sales until eleven thirty, because you're not modifying the serving hours. You're only modifying where they can serve them, whether. So to answer John's question, it would be whether or not they're, which must be, which must be in that. And to our point earlier, if they've been doing it historically, one would assume there's no claim, but that is a likely scenario that we're going to have with new, new service at new locations and premises that haven't, haven't served before outdoors. So it's definitely a valid point, but this one is odd in the sense that, as Joe said, they have been doing it forever. In fact, I think the original, someone told me that they thought the original license was eighteen twenty.
Yeah.
It's a good trial, very true, because it expires in November, that's all. Then we get a bunch of issues between November.
And then, you know, if the neighbor, neighbors do have issues with it, that's an issue for the, this license authority to address.
Historically, you intend they have anything on that porch, is if they have a golf tournament, or sometimes they don't have any party up there. Mostly it's golf tournaments. So this, they could actually expand into an everyday affair, which they didn't. I can, I know apple shirts, I'm remembering. It's not an everyday affair that people are out there at dinner time sitting on that porch. So this is actually standing, a lot further. Like Ray said, I think it's probably a trial. If they abuse it, then when it comes to waste, in fact, so be it.
All right. So I have a motion by Rick and a second by Jim. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Good job.
In the motion, could you state that it's a hundred dollars fee will be waived? Or is that understood now? Because we've done it.
You passed it on Monday, but no, it was a good thought. Thank you, Joe. Anything else? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? That is unanimous. We do have a few minutes. Is there anything? I threw on the agenda just a reopening update in case there was anything that we needed to surprise the Board of. I do know that I did receive a question just before coming in here this evening about the park, so I know that John and Jim, you were going to be working on that. Do we have an estimated date of when we think that there'll be some guidance?
So the Town Administrator sent our email today with individuals who'll be working together on this. So who is the leader, figure out the leadership of that group? Could you put that up? I think we can name some.
It's an ad hoc group, working group that consists of Member Duval, Vice Chairman Bush, Donna Seasons, Robert Hoover, and to a lesser extent, Jerry and Mark, just to have the Inspection Services there. There's no appointed member. I would recommend one or both of you do that. Staff deserves support here with this. I just wanted to give you a little bit of framework, and we have a pool of people, because all, Robert has the focus on the facilities with DPW. Donna already threw out some really good ideas for science for it. She, she built most of our facilities, so she knows the fully. And Mark and Jerry interchangeably, you know, are there guiding in terms of the sanitation aspect. And I sent you all the guidelines that I could find from the yield that you gave, so you have them.
Can we have a call in Zoom meeting with the employees? Does anyone work here? Is that right?
All of those folks are here full time.
Oh, they are full time.
Robert is here all the time, Donna's here, Jerry, Mark is here.
Okay, so we'll put you for something. Come on, let's get on.
And you don't need me for that, if you know, if I'm, if I'm busy, I'm happy to be here. You're happy here.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Then we can, yes, we can have a five minute reset, and we'll come back, and our first interview will be at five thirty.
Chief Boyne is here, by the way, he's sitting in the hog cabin.
Okay. Great.
I'm going to run up to my car up right there.
Okay.
And I'm.
Hi, the table might still be a little wet. I just wiped it down to assure that we are sanitizing properly. You're welcome. Sean, nice to meet you in person.
Nice to meet you, Robert.
I, I know that you had called in on Monday, so you're familiar with some of our voices, but I'd like to go ahead and just have us introduce ourselves, if that's okay. My name is Christine Hoyt. I am the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and I will go this way.
Hi, I'm Jim Bush, Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen. I'm Rick Wagen. Sean Hallen. And John Wall.
And you met Jay upon your entrance. So great. So we're happy that you're able to join us this evening in person. We have a series of questions that we're going to ask each of the candidates, and we hope to get through our questions to allow some time at the end for you to ask us some questions. That bottled water is for you, if you feel like you need some water, so that's, we'll just dive right in, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. So, Sean, you've had a chance to review and respond to the job posting and also see the job description. Can you just generally talk to us about your professional experiences and, and your skills, and talk to us about how those will line up with the duties and responsibilities of the town of Adams, and what specifically makes you the right fit for our community?
I realize my upper letter of resume is a long-winded, so I'm going to try and adjournate everything, but most relative, I think, is my past eight years' experience as a police chief for the town of McMillan. We have a population of twenty-eight thousand, someone underestimated, it's approximately thirty, you get to thirty-five in the summer. It's a demographic that are consistent with the makeup of Adams. It's essentially the second part of my career, so to speak, but during that period, I entered into the position in a very similar process, we're having hair interviews and testing, et cetera, and I faced immediate challenges of restructuring the agency. We had a exodus of the command staff, several senior officers, as a result of some benefit changes that were upcoming in the town benefit package. I immediately looked at a squad assessment, looking at the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities, and threats of the agency, and looking at the skill set of the remaining command staff. It was my goal to build upon that internally, giving obviously morale boost, giving opportunity for internal candidates, the essential future leaders of the gates. It was readily identifiable to me, and one of the candidates was really highly skilled, had extraordinary background, and I made some of my promotions be to promote indoor restructuring command staff. I looked at issues such as diversity, were we consistent with the demographic makeup of the community? And we were short on some of them, so our improvement was focused on a broader scale to meet some of the statistics related to the demographics of the community. Benefits of that formation were, it increases the connectivity with the population. There's a lot of information and cultural, I'm going to say, concerns that go with this, and bringing candidates with those cultural backgrounds into the police department educates everybody, raises awareness, and also provides better service. So those were some of the things. That was some of the reasons that I saw some connection with that. Also, moving forward, we're faced a lot of infrastructure issues. Some of the challenges were fleet failure and communication system. Complete, I'm going to say, breakdown, or fleet was dilapidated, it wasn't even, it was a makeup of mission act, different vehicles, we had, looking at it, the officers were at significant risk, the C-40 should approve certain vehicles and the like. So I brought some of that to the table through some innovative financing initiatives, we were able to revamp the fleet, bring it consistent, looking at the law, so long as the safety was key component, some of the things we looked at. Moving forward into that, we had, I think on my third weekend, the radio communication console fired, the West Blue Communications. Looking at the radio system, it was something that I had experienced equipment-wise back in the late eighties when I was at the State Police. So we looked at some immediate management, it's pretty, and grant funding, we received a grant right off the bat of almost two-hundred thousand dollars. We got the ball rolling, completely redesigned and structured the communication system, working with our communications. And that was an exposure to see how, you know, consultation studies, site development, tower locations, acquisition of properties by the municipality, and private property, working with the community, and we're able to put together a four-point-three-million-dollar communication system, state-of-the-art, multi-tower locations, five of them exactly, multitask, a simulcast with a microwave transmission. And the, it was state-of-the-art, obviously, and it increased the safety of every officer. We incorporated the fire department, the ambulance, and public works into the communication system, so we had a united and a cooperative collective communication system. State-of-the-art, again, we had four tasks, we used it for ten years, looked at the thirty year service availability of it, and that was completed sixteen months as scheduled, and a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars total budget. Some of the other achievements was our community interaction initiatives, I believe in officers on foot, I believe in bike patrols, I believe in regular contact with community residents by doing so. Some of our, I'm going to say staff limitations, didn't afford staff to have a constant foot beat officer, but also knowing that in a square, in a, in a community of sixty-four-and-a-half square miles, you've got to walk these foot, it's not going to get to the cross so fast. So we did some initiatives, or a combination of both, electric clearance of your vehicle, and community interaction, record and document, community contact forms, things like that. And the bike patrol is certainly a huge, I'm going to say, connection with the town. The church groups, I focused on the community activist, some of our, you know, the community groups, Rotary, Knights of Columbus, the Lions Club. We're going to be meeting with them, and they were voices of the community. We could hear some of the needs, some of the desires, some, what's going on in the police department. We exercised a lot of our connectivity with the community through Facebook, social media. And those were some of the things that worked in place at the time when I got there, and it's something we developed into. And part of all that, certainly, we learned and really started to capitalize on public trust. We built that, we focused on that. It was all about service, all about community interaction, all about building trust, confidence in the police department. I wanted it to be really a sense of some of the results that were later revealed in the Twenty-First Century Police Report. The public had trusted us to do what we were doing, that what we were doing was legitimate. So those are some of the important things that I feel that were, that had given me a, we kind of in a position to feel confident to succeed in this position. Also, we're, you know, I negotiated three collective party agreements with the patrol officers, three collective party agreements with our medications dispatchers, of which we had to address some significant financial issues within town, to look at some of the benefit packages, not just have a standard insurance availability, get the pair, and introduce some hybrid benefit packages. Recruitment retention was drastically affected by the pay scale, it was extremely low. So working with the information available to me through the Connecticut Council of the municipalities, I did a wage comparison study, and I was able to, working with the town council and the Board of Finance, we got some financial initiatives to make it more interesting to be, be an employee in the town of McMillan. So instead of spending a hundred thousand dollars for an option to the academy, we'll get some wage initiatives, and that term, retain them, so we weren't using, we have a lot. get some wage initiatives and, in turn, retain them, so we weren't using young officers to better manage the departments. Uh, we looked at restructuring the schedule, uh, the, the work schedule was a five-two. These officers were working twenty-five years, Tuesday, Wednesday off, not the best for family life, and certainly we had a unusual, uh, high rate of absenteeism. By introducing that flex schedule of five-three, five days on, three days off, they incorporated weekends and the time off, our sick leave took abuse, and, um, other, uh, leave costs over time, et cetera, decreased enormously. So, looking at that, those were, again, some things to make employment better. Uh, other things were school safety initiatives, uh, they were not available, so we reduced some active aggressive shooting, uh, response training quite a bit, actually. It wasn't just conventional, "Please start here, this is what we're gonna do." I felt important to utilize the skill set of the faculty and staff, 'cause they know the complete layout of the school, they know every note, every training. All our training incorporated, uh, not only the ambulance, uh, uh, service, the fire service, also incorporated the faculty and staff. They played a major role in, between evacuation, sheltering in place, um, and not just solely evacuating schools to singular, uh, off-site, secure location. We established multiples in case of threat continued outside. And also, from my experience, uh, reinforcement was huge. And all, everybody else, you know, plans to exit the school, no one plans to get back in, no one ever plans to reunite the families when the parents show up, and I call it the mini-band for being, because the tech field is out, the mini-band's coming. So, that was some of the important issues. Um, additionally, uh, we, uh, we focused again on the, uh, development of personnel and training opportunities, and training is, as we all know, a major cost in, in police department operations, and the remote area, I'm gonna say, the visit location of Milford to the Training Academy, I was spending two to three, sometimes four hours of overtime just travel time for the officer. So, working regionally with some of the various police department within the immediate area, being the chiefs, we selected individuals for specific training opportunities, we trained the trainer, and we were holding our training locally, and that immediately cut back huge costs of overtime, of overtime related to training. At that point in time, now we could expand training opportunities to, uh, broaden our department department. Um, additionally, emergency response, uh, tactical teams, guide teams, active reconstruction teams, we worked, uh, regionally, uh, using other police department resources, yeah, focusing, again, that are all, again, cost-saving initiatives. So, as chief, uh, I presented, uh, eight five-million-dollar-plus budgets. I never once had to, uh, request supplementary appropriation for funding. Uh, we often were able to return, uh, significant funds back to the community, um, expended, uh, my capital expenditures were kept at a minimum, they were a need list, not a want list, um, and yet we were able to bring in equipment such as, uh, 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 motor vehicle or, uh, recorders and the, uh, you know, video recording equipment to the cruisers, um, for officer safety issues, evidence, uh, value collection, and the like. So, those were some of the important things. Uh, we worked very aggressively with state asset forfeiture agreement and working with narcotics investigations, seizure of monies, properties, um, and we were in terms of seeing over the years hundreds of thousands of dollars of state asset forfeiture monies. That's solely based on my previous experience with the State Police, working in the narcotics task force, working exclusively with the asset forfeiture unit, State Attorney's Office. So, I kinda had a good experience in the interworking to that. Um, that process is very similar nationally, controlled by the federal government. So, to bring that skill set to Adams would be, uh, easy to tell. Um, additionally, uh, we looked at, uh, restructuring, some, um, operational issues in the agency, uh, mapping, uh, the sectors of patrol were not efficiently laid out, we restructured those, we structured some of our response, uh, protocols, so it just wasn't the free cruiser responding to the call, with the closest call principal, that was all available through the electronic mapping of the GPS system. Uh, yeah, and that, again, um, I think what prepared me through all this was, uh, my twenty-four years of defending state police. Um, it was a, a great opportunity to, um, to work in throughout the state. I had experience bringing up all hundred and sixty-nine pounds. Um, I investigated everything from, um, alley-oop blocks, uh, damage to homicide. Um, I had great exposure, great training opportunities. I started off as patrol trooper in the more of a quest corner, majority of my, uh, law enforcement experience spent in rural community policing. Um, I did a, a five-year tour, Town of, uh, Parkford, where I served as a resident trooper in Madison, actually, the chief of the police, a small department, then a nine-man crew, seven-man to park time. Um, I was responsible for overall supervision, uh, the, uh, the, the operations of the department, uh, purchasing vehicles, and it really was my first, it was a hands-on experience to, uh, law enforcement in this administration's chief of police. I was promoted to the rank sergeant in nineteen ninety-six. I was immediately assigned to the Connecticut State Police statewide archives task force, and our primary responsibility was to assist municipalities in our product investigations from street level all the way up to, uh, major international trafficking. Um, I was predominantly, uh, involved in investigations regarding, uh, following, uh, wiretaps, electronic oil and wire intercepts, um, working with the state courts and preparing affidavits, overseeing the operations, and that's for mature seizures of property, vehicles, monies, and again, seating houses, cars, some property internationally, working with the FBI, DEA, et cetera. So, that was a great experience. I returned back to the troop, working patrol operations. I was promoted in two thousand and four to the rank of S. Sergeant, which I was assigned to Trooper Dean Orkanen as the executive officer. My lieutenant went out on leave almost immediately, next week, and I wanted to as a commanding officer acting for my tour, two years, uh, at the, uh, at the Canaan area, I was, again, overseeing, uh, patrol of fifty-four troopers, uh, sixty-dollar bucket, um, studying some odd vehicles, um, in two municipal police departments, as resident troopers officer. So, that was my, uh, introduction into the band, so to speak. I was promoted to thousand and six to the rank lieutenant. I was meeting with sign of professional standards, uh, and right away, we started to go into the internal affairs investigations regarding this conduct of officers, uh, troopers in the agency. Um, it was kind of amazing, I didn't really think how crazy things could be, people could actually do, but it is. Um, most of my investigations were centered around this conduct related to domestic violence, sexual assault, uh, department policy violations, um, had a lot of exposure to the, uh, Legal Affairs Division of the agency, as well as the State Labor Department, which I wanted to, obviously, test the disciplines and things like that, testify, prepare briefs for our, uh, presentation. Um, that was a great opportunity, really gave me a lot of background in employee discipline and, and oversight and policy. Um, in two thousand and seven, I turned to the troop as commanding officer, Troopel. Uh, we had a hundred and thirty officers under my command, ninety-four troopers, and fifty-seven, uh, municipal, uh, officers, residential troopers in Towns. Um, that was an extraordinary responsibility, because I also worked as essentially detective officer for the district commander, the major, so we oversaw the major prime unit, so we pulled out all homicides, verified subjects, bodies and subrises, profiled investigations in the municipality and the like. And like I said, that was a great opportunity to turn me from chief. Uh, my law enforcement career started in the Town of Lee, right along, uh, I thought I was chief, um, so you see firsthand what chiefs do, um, throwing it up through it. Uh, I was able to, right after college, be hired, um, and I thought that was an extraordinary opportunity. Um, and then I had to alter to Connecticut State Police, so I wanted to reach in there. Um, I just get in local schools in Lake, playing a lot of football up here. Um, I don't like that field up there, I'm telling you.
I'm sure you don't.
It's kind of hard. You've got some bums and bruises up there. Um, it was always a great opportunity to play a lot of hockey at the road. Um, again, graduated from a nice school and attended Wesley McCallie, which is a bachelor degree, and, um, social ally, constable, second criminal justice. My training includes the Massachusetts Police Academy, the Connecticut State Police Academy. I graduated with a total forty-first session of the FBI National Academy, um, one tenth of one percent of law enforcement in the world are accepted. That was a great opportunity the State Police gave me. Um, it gave me an international network of, uh, other professionals to be constantly communicating, exchange mails of certain current issues in the country and the world. It's just a great resource to have.
Sean, I'm gonna stop you there, you're gonna have some specific questions.
I'm sorry.
Probably to draw in a little bit more of what you've been talking about, um, but I appreciate that overview, and we're gonna go, we're gonna start with Joe, but before, um, we go into the questions, I did fail to mention that the, this is still a public meeting, I know I told you that over the phone. Um, it is being recorded, and I do have a couple of people who are on the call, so I'll just let you know that Deb Dunlap, who is our admin assistant, um, Ed St. John, who is our legal counsel, and we have a member of the public, Dan Anderson. If anybody else should enter into the room, I will let you know, as I like, I like to let everybody else here know. If I'm looking at my screen, it's not because I'm being rude, but I'm just trying to manage, um, those who are coming in to the room, and if I look at my phone, it might be because there's a sound issue. So, um, I just wanted to make sure I was very clear on the logistics that's happening over here. Not how it looks like to do an interview, but, these are the times that we're in.
I'm a little...
Okay. Joe, if you would like to ask your first question.
Okay, um, first of all, uh, thank you for, uh, thinking about Town of Adams, considering it for, uh, becoming our infant police chief, and, um, I wanna welcome you here, and once again, thank you for, uh, putting your name into the app, and I have to say, your resume is quite impressive.
Thank you.
Um, my question to you is, and I'm going to read it twice so that you will be able to digest it, uh, and give yourself a little time for thought. In light of the ongoing protests taking place throughout our nation abroad regarding the death of George Floyd by overzealous law enforcement personnel, do you see policing tactics and racial stereotyping continuing? Will the powers that be relent, or will the same situation rise again? I ask this because there have been other racially charged and egregious actions undertaken by police resulting in the unwarranted deaths of black Americans. Still, nothing has transpired to curb these happenings. Please expound on your views and discuss how racial profiling can finally be put to rest. I strongly believe that all lives matter regardless of the color of one's skin or any other attributes which one possesses. The world is big enough to accommodate everyone if the binders are allowed to be remo... the blinders are allowed to be removed. So, um, I'm going to read it this time very quickly. In light of the ongoing protests taking place throughout our nation abroad regarding the death of George Floyd by overzealous law enforcement personnel, do you see policing tactics and racial stereotyping continuing? Will the powers that be relent, or will the same situation arise again? I ask this because there have been other racially charged and egregious actions undertaken by police officers, officers resulting in the unwarranted deaths of black Americans. Still, nothing has transpired to curb these happenings. Please expound on your views and discuss how racial profiling can finally be put to rest. I strongly believe that all lives matter regardless of the color of one's skin or any other attributes which one possesses. The world is big enough to accommodate everyone if the blinders are allowed to be removed.
Respectful, please. Um, I have to say, I have to say one thing. Uh, I often, I have, as a professional, reserved to make comment on such events, but this event is in a whole different world of its own. We witnessed a murder in the U. Two. That, that was a murder in progress that we all had to watch. Um, so, I feel very comfortable speaking with my experience with that. Working in the Connecticut State Police Internal Affairs Division, overseeing internal affairs operations of the Milford Police Department, I am one for accountability. Um, now, there's several important factors to understand, and, uh, I think considering this is, uh, real policy, I'd just say we have policy, have policy that's real, usable, and offered guidance. I took the opportunity to read the Minneapolis Police Department's use of force policy. If you look at the actions that resulted in Mr. Floyd's death by the law officer, it is, it's completely in disregard for, I would say, a, a very thorough use of force policy. Um, how do we, as law enforcement, control someone's, I'm gonna say, uh, recognition and conduct consistently, valuable policy? Well, we have to go through it many ways. Real sanction for violating policy, uh, real consequence for violating policy. Uh, what's gonna happen, what hap... and that is a multiple levels of policy violation, and what's more upsetting to me is, I look at that and I'm heartbroken, because I see Mr. Floyd, I see what's happening to him. I've investigated a lot of murder. I've never witnessed one, other than some archive murders, uh, i.e. being John Kelly and, uh, Lee Harvey Oswald and the Vietnamese soldier, uh, the Vietnamese prisoner. I never witnessed one that was in my lifetime. So, in my fifty-six years of seeing that, it was a complete setback, and living and experiencing the challenges and dynamics of law enforcement, it, it's, I just still haven't been able to grasp that. So, I studied it, I think about it, and wondered, well, realities are, there's absolutely no regard for that man's dignity, there's no regard for that man's life, this narcissistic attitude and his demonstration of behavior kneeling on that man's neck, and looking around the crowd, what you looking for? A approval, protest, that's absolutely, it's, it's nauseating. And I've had long involved meetings with the County Chiefs Association on what's next. It is time for change, there has to be change, and it's sad that it's taken, it's, it's, it's very sad at what a point it takes something like this to do. Now, this has been growing in the country. I realize it started with Rodney Kenney. There's been investigations in the city of Bridgeport, um, that I've conducted and then involved, and there's been investigations in the city of Meredith with the abuse of, uh, prisoners, prisoners or racial profiling concerns. The state of Connecticut, in my experience, has taken some great strides in trying to address, um, the new Milford. We had, uh, to log all interactions with persons on an official basis, sex, age, race, reason, um, like a motor vehicle stop, was it even searched, not searched, occupants in the vehicle, and we were collectively analyzing those statistics to see that we were essentially meeting our policies concerning bias-based placement. Um, we had to log in reports, what efforts were made to meet procedural justice, is everybody being treated fairly, is this a fair and equitable transaction, what options are offered, what level of communication did you introduce? So, those were steps, I took, and I think those were remarkable steps that have been mirrored by many of the departments, and now it's becoming some official processes just to keep the transparency and the fair and equitable treatment above or, or available. But again, the demonstrations, the message is clear, it's time for change. How do we go about change? Well, most recently, we have the eighteeneenth wave, if we're not familiar with it. It really is a fine-tuning of the use of force policy, and it really turns into something like, uh, the documentation of the use of force, which is done by statute. Um, warning before shooting, exhausting all alternatives before reaching your least deadly force level, uh, no strangleholds, chokeholds, um, uh, if you could escape me right now. But all these are addressing various aspects of use of force policies throughout the state, um, and throughout the country, and a lot of policy today is completely under the, I'm gonna say, the model policies prepared by the Commission on Accreditation from Law Enforcement Agencies, CLIA, and that's the national accreditation standard for across the state. The state of Massachusetts has its level of accreditation, and then we get another level of states. So, it's imperative that these standards are prepared and policy and met through training. Um, we can't, we can't structure, train, we have to structure training to meet policy. We can't not train the policy. We can't, we can't miss that, we're responsible, we have to make sure people are training to meet policy.
Yes, Sean, um, we have a lot of other questions.
I'm sorry.
No, that's quite okay. I fasted just, and I know that, you know, we've got a number of questions, and, um, I don't wanna short, yeah, I don't wanna short. I don't wanna short, yeah, I don't wanna short you for answering because we have another community coming in.
I'm sorry.
So, thank you. No, that's quite okay.
Well, I'm gonna actually, my question is, go ahead and expand on what you were just saying. My question is, identify and discuss your experience in creating, reviewing, assessing law enforcement policy and procedure, agency directives, or general orders.
Since I, since I've worked fourteen, twelve months, I've been re-employed by the Connecticut State Police as a temporary worker and retired. And I'm working directly for the Colonel, assessing current policy, procedure, making recommendations for policy revision because the state police in Connecticut is currently under renewal of its CLIA accreditation. So I'm assigned to the accreditation unit. I'm working with a retired major. And what we do is make sure facilities, troops, support services, and policies are up to standard, meet the CLIA requirements. Myself personally, I drafted and revised several policies in the town of Milford through my service there, bringing us to the current standards. We introduced the accreditation process. We, it's a three-tier process. We finished tier one, approvals. We got tier two completed. We didn't get our final sign off. It's in process now. And that would have given us state accreditation and the process almost mirrors CLIA, which would just be another visit from the professional agency, check it off the box, what we need. Policy is extraordinarily essential. Beyond that, policy has to be incorporated guide. You just can't have the rules, do this, don't do this, do this, don't. You have to have some direction in there on how to achieve the objective of the policy. Often absolute policy results in absolute failure. It's a guide. Bible, it's a guide, and as understood as that. But additionally, training has to incorporate the various, I'm gonna say, avenues that you can go down and you're ever to meet those policy goals. So training is not only specific to exactly the mission of the policy, but some of the variables that can be developed or dedeveloped while you're addressing or trying to comply with policy. Law enforcement is very fluid. It changes every minute, every second, every time. And we have to train our officers to adapt, improvise, and be available for change immediately. So my experiences both professionally, during my active career, and most recently exclusively related to policy development, policy implementation, and giving officers real and, I would say, valuable guidance for them in the light of those policies.
Joe, quick follow-up to that. In our community with the town of Adams, the Select Board has responsibility for policy. I'm not sure how well the process was in New Milford, but how do you feel about working with the Board's Selecting on the review of the current policy of the police department and providing updates to the Board?
Well, I think that's absolutely necessary. I never heard people complain there's too much communication. And this Board has the thumb on the pulse of this community. We can draft policy in this consistent language, from my experiences, that may not be as effective with the language, meeting the same objective, that can be provided through the experiences of this collective board. So I think regular meetings are necessary, regular discussion, regular action, regular planned action, and a huge part, I would say, the overall strategic planning of how the department's gonna be today and where it's gonna be tomorrow.
Matt and Jared, I'd like to just assert, just as a follow-up on the same point. Chief, your experiences in Connecticut, so just on the policy aspect, if you were selected, can you just tell the Board how you go about familiarizing yourself with Massachusetts, relevant law, code of mass rec, and any of the Massachusetts body that regulates police service?
Kind of already started a little bit. I've got a huge network of municipal chiefs. I've been lifelong friends with Steve O'Brien Lennox, lifelong friend with Geraldine Lee Stockbridge. I've been, you know, associated with Bill Walsh, with Ray Barrington, our wife. So those are immediate. The Massachusetts Association has an extraordinary, extraordinary information base, extraordinary legal base available too. And they really offer new chiefs a lot coming on board and some specific, I'm gonna say, direction created in just that. Thank you.
How much experience have you had working with collective bargaining units? And what do you consider the essential elements of effective later management of the agents?
I've had, my initial, it's, I've been a member of the collective bargaining unit for my career, since the last eight hours. I have to say, formerly it started in nineteen ninety-one when I was on the state police collective bargaining committee for a contract. Kind of the guy sitting in the corner, attention on what's going on, kind of learning for, participated in that process for about two years. Since then, being a sergeant and then a troop commander in charge, a lot of the search that some of the managerial decisions were brought my attention. In one troop, I had eleven different collective bargaining units between janitorial, clerical, dispatch, civilian employees, records, it was very involved. I frequently met with the collective bargaining representatives. Their input was very important, sharing information about how the department was handling business, how I was handling business. Really, it was a cooperative and, I'm gonna say, productive working relationship. Since I arrived in New Milford, like I said, I negotiated three collective bargaining agreements with patrol division, collective bargaining, collective bargaining agreements with dispatch, two separate unions, same intern, but two separate unions. But it was, it was a rewarding experience. It was, I had to make sure the employees got the best they could get, but I had to protect the interests of the town. You couldn't bankrupt the town. And I presented myself like that. Realistic wages, realistic raise increases, things like that. Realistic demands. We weren't gonna increase vacation to five weeks when you come in the door. We weren't gonna give you four and a half. We knew at some point in time, the standard, the operational averages, accepted averages of collective bargaining throughout the state was somewhere between two and two and a quarter. So if we could get them somewhere realistic and have a viable cost projection at the end of the execution or the reputation of the contract that was acceptable to the town, the town was pretty free with me on how to get there. But I really had to cut off that number. I always came in below that number. And we always seemed that, hey, qualified, some codified practices, some MLUs, some past practices that just seemed to keep floating through the contract, and clarify and qualify all those into the secure template of the contract. So there were no arguments or, I would say, disagreements with language, but it took several years to work through that. There was often, we had a, I mean, there were grievances that were addressed, most of the times just through formal mediation. The unit had its good and bad, I would say, executive board. And I'm not saying good and bad for anything, but some were very limited on, we're just doing it this way. I said, we have to get options. The town is not able to afford that. So working with that, and obviously there's a lot of personalities, there's a lot of passion because it affects their livelihood, every decision, every word in that contract. So, yeah, that's my experience. Drafting, modifying, working through collective bargaining through several different unions and working from state municipalities. And I got, yeah, that's it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sean.
You talked about this in your opening statement, regards to diversity of your department. What training and experience you have in developing and implementing services and programs, courses, and more learning objectives incorporated by this?
I've attended some management seminars sponsored by the Connecticut Chiefs of Police Association. We brought in national instructors. We do a three-day managerial executive training. And through that, some national, I would say, recruiting professionals and some of the strategies and the valuable results of the recruiting and introducing the diversity of the ranks. Specialized training, again, working with our human resources officer, personnel, who was really more involved in recruitment and training based on his previous state service with Department of Corrections. We capitalized on, I'm gonna say, what we thought to be important. We interacted with the state, town council, town council, see what they thought were important qualities. And we reached out to, I've, I reached out to some of the church groups and some of the community activists to see what they thought would be important. And what do you want to see in our municipal police department? What do you want to see in the police department? And how do you want to see us do it? Well, we'd like to see this, we'd like to see, you know, we'd like to see that, again, the diversity that matches the demographics of the community. And part of it too was introducing the officers or the potential candidates to some of the community representatives, thought that was very important. So they could get their, I'm gonna say, put their thumbprint out and put their offensive we have or employee. Thank you.
Did you have anything to raise for a follow-up? Oh, okay. Sorry, Joe. Do I have a budgeting question for you? Jay, I'm gonna ask you to fill in some numbers for me. Your budget is?
About one point eight million.
One point eight million.
Personal operate, and that doesn't include any capital expenditures.
Of the total?
Fifteen million.
Sixteen million dollars of the town's budget. Can you just keep that in mind?
I wanna say, police and DPW are awfully close, but police is probably the most well-funded department.
I had it at one point seven, so I was.
Why not?
It was a little bit, I was close. So if you could just identify and discuss your budgeting experience, knowledge, and your depth.
My budgeting experience started with resident trooper in Hartford, collecting salary, recurring and recurring expenses, capital, plan, both one, two, one, five, and ten year. Funding, support facility, and other, I would say, officer benefits, which is EAP and the like. But again, it was modest, very small. And it was a complete oversight the first time. As I, with the state police, I was involved in high-level command meetings where we discussed some of the long-range, multimillion-dollar, you know, line items, anything relative to specialized enforcement, you know, contracts, everything. But you weren't hands-on as the soul, I would say, author of that financial plan. But it gave me a good background. When I got to New Milford, I was presented with being able to research the previous budgets, looking at salary, looking at wage, looking at projected costs, some of the programs that we wanted to introduce, some equipment we needed to support those programs, budget their financial forecast. And then at that point in time, met with department heads and the agency, administrative services, detective division, patrol services, what do you need, where you how you want to do it. And they would bring it in sometimes, I would say, which, at that point in time, I was trying to be responsible, what do we need, what can we want, and what's reality. So I would examine the payroll, for example, personnel costs. I knew how many officers, a certain, I'm gonna say, stage of the contract, the wage, and what that cost would be. I knew there was thirty-five officers at step two. I knew there was twenty-seven officers at step three, nine officers at step five. So I knew those costs, could project those into an accurate pay scale and have those personnel costs almost to the dot. What was fluid, obviously, was overtime cost, it was simply a local backwash, the major storm event or something. So those were almost fluid. But working through, I would say, past experience and past history, we were able to bring those pretty close. At that point in time, we had opportunities to supplement funding grants, supplement different programs, such equipment and potential services, like additional traffic and ordnance to a forecast of available grants. You kind of look at the grant schedule and see what you can apply to, what you're passing, what you got, usually got again next year. So it was kind of a very valuable tool. I had a wonderful finance director. I operated the mayor of some of my strategic planning and financial planning. Again, but the very valuable resource was the financial director, especially early on. He has to do this, so he can do that. And that led to looking at potential for additional personnel, looking at retirements, where we might be, and then you have to capitalize on academy training costs, you have to look at recurring mandated state annual training costs. So all those were calculated and presented in the budget. With that, capital expenditures for everything from, you know, furniture replacement, we did set up early on centralizing information technology. So I didn't have a police lieutenant programming and fixing and straightening out computers. We had a computer perfection through it. I didn't have, you know, sworn law enforcement transporting mail to the town hall. So we took a lot of those, and those were different line items we had to add for additional personnel, but we kept sworn personnel when we sworn police business. So with that, not only was it drafted in the budget, but was making it more efficient. So my experience was a period of budget draft, meeting with the finance board, purchasing committees, going over capital expenditure, interest, going over recurring and recurring expenses in the budget cross and plan budget. And then, at that point in time, presenting my budget publicly, kind of hearing. I did that through one of those PowerPoint, and it was, and looking at the Adams budget, I wish I could present it like that. We had a lineup for one pencil, I mean, it was crazy, but it was very involved. So it was involved. My budget was met with little or no concern, often complimented as being open, complimented as being thorough and informative on presentation. And they were approved with pretty much minimal cuts, if any, that weren't affecting, that would not affect our operations. So my budget experience.
Thank you. And I will say, you might not have a line item for a pencil, but you will be questioned on every line item by the Board of Selectmen and our finance committee. So I can assure you that it is a tough process.
On the root, the vessel was just a full justification and.
Yep.
Most satisfied, most interested.
There's one to clarify. Joe?
Okay, Tom. As a lifelong resident of Adams, I have witnessed the evolution of our police department. I vividly remember as a young man, the officers walking the streets and addressing you as you passed by. The nightly rounds to stores to check for their security, the writing of tickets for expired parking meters. In short, the Adams police had a visible presence and you knew who they were. Times have changed, they always do. No longer do the town's police officers walk the beat. They drive their cruisers to accomplish their tasks. No longer do they check stores after closing. Instead, they shine a spotlight on the business facade and move on. No longer do they write parking tickets for meter violations. We get to add a town physician to make this transaction. I must admit that I cannot put a name to a face of all of our police officers. What is your take on policing, which I term resident-friendly?
This is the way I grew up. You know, who was walking down the street, they knew me by name. Yeah, turn my father's perspective on that. I tried to meet that back in New Milford. Simple as wave to people, you drive down the street, say hello. It was remarkable how many officers responded, you know, do you know this guy? Boy, I didn't ask. Oh, he said he's gay, oh, it was pretty good. Yeah, I would, as a chief, maybe it's micromanagement, I tried to stay away from that. But I would ensure that my supervisors were making regular checks on midnight shift, on the back stores, did every check, and not just tire tracks around the building. I want to see footprints out the door. I want to get footprints outdoors. I thought it very important. Our industrial base is huge, but we had enough people to minimally accommodate a portion or a large portion of that on minimum one day a week, two days a week. In Adams, I see the culture, I see the demographics, I see the structure of this community, very similar to what I grew up in. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask officers to make a physical check. I think the business owners deserve it. I think it's necessary to have an officer on the street. I think it's necessary to see the officer. I think it's necessary to the town, Board of Selectmen, and the government to know who's working for them. Just driving around with the windows up and your sunglasses on your forehead. This driving around with the windows up and your sunglasses on your forehead and just getting to and from where you've got to go, pass up spanned, regular interaction, conversational with residents, stop, talk to the kids, go to the playground, go to the ballgame. When I started my career in New Milford, I was appalled that I didn't see a cop grabbing a coffee. Like, "I'm grabbing coffee," say, "I'm a store owner." Oh, we got enough, I want you in the store, I want you to have, I want you to have communication, you learn so much, you learn who people are. And if I'm just a store owner, it's going to be the guy getting coffee, it's going to say hello. "Hi, I'm Joe Smith, I'm in Brown," whatever. That's all part of community policing. That's what community policing, twenty percent of your policing is, what cops you should do. We don't do that anymore. We've got to get back to, we're not trained to do it. And trainers that are training young officers don't have experience in that. So, you know, it takes an old guy like me to say, "Look, this is the right way to do it." And then what you're doing is not wrong, you can just do it better. So I'm an advocate to have officers on the street. And walking down the streets, an expired meter, you can write the citation, break a warning, but raise the awareness that there's a violation, and you're getting paid any money. So I'm an advocate to be about, be active, be engaged, wrap doors, talk to people, say hello, and just be around. It's not, you know, I mean, I don't know, it's concerning, I don't have an excellent answer, but I do have an answer that takes supervisory oversight and a change in culture. And it's something that might be a little resistant at first, but once they find out the reward. And I used to tell my guys, my women, the ABC, when you interact with somebody, make sure you're done. And when you finish, is there anything else I can do for them? That one statement would miles with the community, there's a lot of feedback. Yeah, so, thank you.
Okay. The Adams Police Department works closely with the Adams Fire Department, Adams Forest Forest, EMS, Regional Emergency Management, State Police, as well as community-based organizations. What has made you an effective collaborator in your current or past jobs?
Working in one of the most remote areas in the state of Connecticut, some of my control areas, here closest help was one of the firemen driving by. So I always had a great rapport with the fire department, I had great appreciation for it. My grandfather, my uncles were longtime volunteers for the fire department. They run the oil off, and the pickup trucks heading out the yard, well within the same neighborhood. So I appreciate the commitment of both the volunteer fire departments and the professionals, but there's a lot to say in, you know, respect, respectful to the commitment. So I've always had a positive respect for those that volunteered to serve, and those that served, put themselves at risk. But that being said, it's a very productive relationship because it's a huge component of the task base, and so it gives Boeing influence. And if we can support the fire department as best we can, we'll get their support. It's simple things like a motor vehicle accident, you might have the road shut down, you don't have the officer available to stand there in direct traffic for two, three hours for whatever reason, but the voluntary commitment of the fire department, all often jump in and handle, help out with traffic control. So I've always had a lot of exposure to the area's fire departments. I work closely with multi-community emergency management directors, county management directors. I exercised a lot of the resources with the state police when I was with New Milford, I knew what they had, and some of the things, and those are these cost offsets from the town being committed to these, I'm going to say, high-risk, low frequency, I'm going to say, use of resources that normally the state police would have to have. So it's important to have a positive productive relationship with the state police, whereas it's right up the street. I could have no reservation meeting regularly with the troop commander, I'm not sure who's out there now, I know some of the troopers that do work in the area, they, I talked to two of them, they said they've got a great pool of the guys for feeding, limited feeding. So, yes, it's very important we have a very effective, and there should be regular communication on what their needs might be from the police department, certainly I would express what my needs are for, you know, assist the police department. So I always have regular meetings with the fire departments in Milford. They were volunteers for a city of a town that size, but a great group of guys, I always invited to their, they got the best state dinner, I'll tell you that. But I always got invited to their dinners, their meetings, certainly go, share training opportunities, we incorporate the fire department a lot of our training, and then we incorporate a lot of the police. So very effective to have a positive supportive relationship between the other, you know, professionals as well.
Thank you. I understand.
Think about the recent collaboration with the police chief. Where's your experience working with the district attorney's office?
Fitzfield, I'm familiar with the recent assignment of District Attorney Harrington. I know some of the investigators assigned to her office, Mass State Police, working with them in the northwest corner of Connecticut. I have to say, in Connecticut, I have been highly involved with the state's attorney's office. Most recently, I've worked with, obviously it's chief in New Milford, but I've done some high-profile investigations under the direction of the state's attorney's office, City of Woodswood County, Dave Sheepack, Don Gallo, Dave Shannon, it's back from Michael. Beyond that, I mean, I was, I used, in state of Connecticut, in order to execute a search warrant, required a review of a state's attorney and signature of a new report master district. And some of the actions and investigations we're conducting would require spontaneous execution of search warrant. So more than once, I've been to the state's attorney's house at three, four in the morning, need to look at the state, we're going to hit the store later this morning, and I got turned up out of savage on standby. So I'm in the kitchen, put coffee on, cooking breakfast in the kitchen. So I've always had a great rapport with the state's attorney, only because I had a very aggressive and ethical work ethic, I would say, work style. I, I don't think, well, I think conversation for secondary round of references, he's eventually calling. But that being said, I understand that they are a chief law enforcement agent in the county. They, we are required to cooperate with their office in every way. I think regular meetings, available interaction, the meet, the request, the requirements that pro officer are necessary and we've done. Thank you.
Sean?
This question involves two different, about three different breakdowns of questions. A position of police chief requires a high degree of accountability. What does accountability mean to you in a legal sense, in regard to data and metrics, in terms of relations with the community? And I just want to state with regards to data and metrics, that that's something that has been lacking to this board for information, to determine how are things going, how we deal with, you know, what, you know, what are the metrics of the department? It's not to use negatively against the department, since that board needs to help the budget or to give the community their support to ask questions to support our police department. So without any information coming this way, it's very difficult for us to help. So that's one of my personal main areas, is metrics and measures, things like that.
Well, I've got to kind of wrap myself around it, because it's a one-way way, I've got to, I know where you're coming from. I don't seem to have embalmed themselves with not sharing information with the councils that oversee really what's going on. Accountability, I've learned over the years that law enforcement, from being higher-up in law enforcement, you're into a smaller fishbowl every time you move by, and everybody knows what you're doing. I'd visit a restaurant with my wife, "Oh, the chief was that here last night for dinner?" The mayor would call, "He went to dinner last night?" Like, "What, yeah, with the, you know, the Seppes or whatever," and she's like, "Well, he didn't call me." Well, you know, joking me. But, so I know how attentive people are on what's going on. Now, I may not even realize who they are, and they, but they'll know who I am. So accountability is a twenty, I'm going to say, twenty-five-eight situation, it's going to be twenty-five hours a day, they're going to know who I am, what I'm doing, and they will know how I'm doing it, because it might not be from their personal observations, but something for the agency is going to think that's torture, because they have an open relationship at individual. I have nothing to worry about. I've got this awful voice in them, I always think the Lord's watching, I always think that I'm going to do something wrong, so I always, you know, it's, I always say, what am I doing? What awareness will this create? Who's going to read about it from a paper? And what's going to be said after review by someone who doesn't know the fact? So always cross that, and I've learned that more than ever. But it's necessary to develop proper report or reporting procedures. I mandated a daily printout case log with the calls for service work, with who they involved, who they involved, and I prepared that for public duty reasons. So if either the reporters came, they want to know what the police department's doing, there you go. Obviously, proper redaction, protective statute of medical issues, et cetera, names, things like that. But the reality is, is that if I'm doing it for reporters, that surely should demonstrate that I'm doing it for the council. And I try to meet with the town council on a regular basis for the town meetings to tell them exactly what's happening to the police department. Not rumor, not innuendo, but factually, here's where we are. And I thought it necessary, especially during the time of some of the commitment of our officers into the theater of war over Iran and Iraq, that, "Hey, I've got a letter from, you know, Jimmy Jones," and he says hi, and I would leave it for them. I would send emails regularly to members of the town council that, you know, "This happened the other night." So I have a regular notification, and I've shared information openly, again, it's public record, but it's your public, and there's no reason why. And the more you know, the less you'll have a question on what I'm doing. And if you don't like it, I'm sure I'll be right on your doorstep to say, you know, "What are you doing while I'm, this is what happened." So it'll relieve you of having questions, it'll relieve the board of wondering what's going on, and I think it'll give you an accurate focus of where we're going, and you'll see some of the future requests of why that request is there. Thanks.
So Sean, we have a little bit of time, so I just want, my follow-up question will be to just ask if, or my final question will be to ask if there's anything that we didn't ask that you wanted to share with us this evening, if you wanted to take a couple of minutes. If something in your experience that you really think that you can bring to the table and we just didn't ask you about, if you wanted to...
Is there a lot, we can come back in about forty minutes? That's what I think about it, remember that well. I am prepared to move forward in this position. Like I said, I have vast amount of experience. I pretty much conducted myself of almost professional and personal integrity throughout my career. I treated everybody I encountered with dignity and respect. I share a high level of respect and return from many of the people. I run into people often that I put in jail. And I know you don't, you know, you kind of off, you know, leave us out a little bit, but I've never had, you know, the negative, I would say, reaction from people, because I treated people with respect. And I think that's important, and I want to make sure the officers under my command do that. Again, very simple, these aren't your enemies, these are people of English States, these are people who we are now warriors against, we're now guardians of. So you move forward with, you know, we're more than a caregiver in law enforcement than we are of, you know, private people of rights and liberties and things like that. So training wasn't incorporated, that's also the sensitivity training, it's a crisis and eventual training, it's all out there for us, we have to pursue. Essentially, my resume says it all. I'm looking forward to returning to the area, I still live properly. My wife and I are, we talked about this at night, the stock tune will certainly give power, working test period of being, so to speak, if it avails. But I'm familiar with the community, I'm familiar with the lifestyle, I really enjoy, like the lifestyle in this area for town, et cetera. And I think the more I was away, the more I learned, I really realized what, it's a very unique area. I worked in all over sixty-nine counties in state of Connecticut. I didn't see what I saw and grew up with in this area. I just didn't see it, I didn't live it, and so I want to come back, and I want to come back doing what I like to do. So I wanted to...
Good call. Yeah, glad to hear it.
One thing that we haven't touched on, I mean, Tom Minister touched on the legal, but are you certified to, you know, sort of police officer in Massville?
I present a copy of my advisory letter from, you just, I'm a well-mannered citizen police officer. I know Mary Beth is essentially retired. I did call, filed an application. I am still certified as a police officer in Connecticut. It's called a comparative qualification, but will incorporate probably thirty to sixty-four hours of online review, and then an application from the town manager for certification, and that's it.
Okay. I only ask because, I don't know if you kept up on the news, one of another community in county hired a chief, he worked for quite a while, and then they found out he wasn't qualified to work in Mass, as a police chief, police officer, or anything.
I've had those investigations in Connecticut. It's a delicate process, I'm very familiar with the certification pursuant to the police officer standing in town from Connecticut. Like I said, I did have interaction with Mary Beth Donovan, the Randolph Mass, and the follow-up phone call prior to the submission of the application here, that's why I let her retire. But I think what's required is a, another, just maybe your current advisory, I want to get that answer, but it's nothing more than a request, I just refer to it earlier. And again, I know it's a really start date, this was something where you were to, I was given a fourth opportunity, I had no reservations to secure all my interests prior to final approval. And only in a position they don't want to... I think that language would probably be worked into the contract for Labor Council, the timeframe to chief certification, consistent with the PCC warrant.
So Sean, do you have any questions about?
I know it's going to be a whirlwind process, I know you're on the fast track, especially the left lane.
I didn't understand that.
Like I said, I do plan to officially return to the area, not with these temporary arrangements I have. Again, being potentially yes or no, in almost six months, I, I'm, that's just the only workforce I, I will be. My wife and I have already looked at some real estate opportunities, so it's in the process, but it's, we're not committed to buyout small. But again, I'm very prepared to be at home, so.
Did you play in the nineteen seventy-nine music game for the college championship? If you wanted to, you know, so...
Oh, a league?
Yeah, not that only a game.
Yeah, I had a friend, an African, the brick big county sheriff, Lou Carone.
Lou Carone, yeah.
Yeah, he changed his helmet from the worst way. We're all angry about that. Yeah, that was a tough team.
That was tough, you guys were good.
Well, I got to be though.
Were you on that team?
I was a loser, I was a loser. But you were, no kidding.
There you are.
And we had a couple of running backs. Yeah, you got, in fact, our quarterback, Dave Islander. Right? I have the other one question here. Just brought out some big farm boys. Probably split one on morning before the game. It's just amazing how the whole county's changed, you know, the mills closing together. They're offering to the feminine community and the cultural arts, western visitation and stuff, so, again, great transition.
Anything else for us?
I just appreciate the opportunity. I sat on board with the Connecticut Chief Association, selecting chiefs, I have no level of involvement, the stay-away night hours, making what questions ask and what right answers, and I've had some experience, I think your questions will really dial over the right guy, will rank candidate for you, so I think it's extraordinary, very, I would say, rewarding process.
And as I mentioned, we are moving quickly through this process, our chief is scheduled to retire mid-July, he has indicated that he could make himself available after that date, if need be, if the process goes a little bit longer. But we expect that we would be in touch with you at some point next week, to let you know where we are in the process. We do have three evenings of interviews, and, which I think I told that to you on the phone, but if anything should come up, have another question about the process, I believe you have my contact information, you have the town administrator's contact information.
I just saw the names that popped up, and I worked with a candidate from Indiana, so they're normal, so.
Yeah.
Great guys.
Good.
And the other thing to keep in mind, chief, is that applying for the interim position, either being awarded the position or not awarded, that does not have any impact on your choice to apply for the permanent position, that'll also be posted again.
That'll also be posted again. And we're kind of keeping our fingers crossed for a late summer restart on that.
Um, one of the things I know the position also is in the package. Um, just as a personal note, I'm not requiring that. I have, I can carry my benefits from my retirement, which I choose to do so because it's very, um, it's a great package, and my wife would probably say worse. So.
Understood. We wouldn't want that happen.
It was a savings to the town. That's just a personal thing.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, before COVID, I would have been shaking your hand and thanking you in that way for being here, but I, I do thank you on behalf of all of us.
I appreciate you getting your time and all the commitment. And, um, we don't need to get, it was very nice meeting everyone. And, uh, we'll see you again.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we could just take a five-minute reset before the next candidate comes in, that would be fantastic, and, uh...
Here?
Yeah.
How are you?
Good for you. And as I mentioned, how everything's been wiped down. Safe, it probably smells like fluorox in here. Um, and Jeff, I know when we spoke on Monday, I told you that this is a public meeting, um, and that we are doing this, doing remote participation for the public to participate. I can let you know right now, uh, the meeting is being recorded. Um, and the individuals on the call right now, we have our admin assistant, Deb Dunlap, who's helping us with minutes, and we have legal counsel, Ed Stinchon III, who's also on the call. Um, if anybody should pop into the call, I will let you know, as I like to let everybody else in the room know. Um, I am not being rude, if I look at my screen, I don't mean to be rude, um, but I'm just handling the logistics of who's in the room and what's going on with the screen. So my apologies upfront.
Okay.
Okay? Um, and I think I've gone through all of those announcements early this time. I forgot before. So we'll go ahead. What we're gonna do is we each have a couple of questions that we're going to ask. We'll kind of go around the room, um, and hopefully leave some room, or leave some time at the end for you to ask us some questions. Okay? So we'll go ahead and just get started, and if you could briefly just tell us how your professional experiences and skills line up with the duties and responsibilities for the police chief for the town of Adams, and what specifically makes you the right fit for our community?
Sure. So my name is Chuck Coe, hello, everyone. Uh, thanks for allowing me to be part of this interview process. Um, I am chief of police in Dalton currently. I've been, uh, I've had a twenty-three-year career in law enforcement there, working through the ranks of part-time to full-time sergeant, which was also in civil service. Then I went through an assessment center and a local interview panel for the selection for chief. Um, and I've been chief for eight and a half years now. Uh, what would make me fit here is having that experience right here in Berkshire County. Um, I also did a lot of mutual aid work back in the days of Detective Ordina, uh, a lot through the DA's task force, um, where I did work right here. Um, so this community has always just caught my eye. When I started commuting to chief meetings with Chief Tarso, uh, I always told him, for some reason, if I ever leave Dalton, Adams is the only place in the county that really caught my eye. It's just beautiful, um, first of all. You have a very good slice of business and commercial. That's something we're lacking in Dalton, and residential. Um, but more importantly, it's the professionalism of officers in your police department. You have a good department that has a good name in the county amongst the other departments. But what stood out to me was the similar, um, trust and support your community members have for those officers, very similar to what we have in Dalton. We have tremendous community support. So it, it is what caught my attention, and my experience, uh, again, here in Berkshire County, I think, would allow me, uh, and I don't know who you're interviewing, and I know there's other candidates, would allow maybe me, uh, have a little bit of, um, an opportunity to ground running, so that my, of the partnerships I have with the sheriff's department, um, with the DA's office, I've been in North Berkshire Court, Central Court, and South County Courts. Um, with my work with Berkshire Law Enforcement Council, which is an entity that all the chiefs in county lead once a month. We've been very active with that. So I know that, I know the surrounding chiefs, uh, all along from Dalton, that we just communicate well as a county. So I think I would be able to get ground running as far as keeping your imprint in a seat at the table and a face that people know to call. Um, you know, I already have my cell phone number that are officers in counties. We operate on mutual aid, is a necessity for all of our small towns. Um, so I think that will, that would help me. I do know some of your officers, um, you know, the newer officers I, I may have met, but I'm not very familiar. All law enforcement departments, by the way, all police departments are getting with a very young, uh, newer force, uh, you know, the, the show, uh, I always had with the seniors in my town was, I don't know who the officers are anymore. I said, I don't know that either, you know, it's just because there's just a high turnover. And state police, I don't know if you're having that problem. State police has just been, uh, once we get someone trained and about that four, five-year mark, uh, you know, so they're comfortable making decisions, the state police ground. So we've been having that, never ending cycle of filling in vacancies and spending money.
It either happens or just that happens, that's what I'm going to say. Um, one of the things I did not do is we did not do introductions. So when you do, uh, ask your first question, if you'll state your name. I know we have nameplates. And if the traffic noise gets to be too much, I guess let Jay know because he's closer to the windows, and he'll help us with the, the windows, but it's helping with a little bit of a comfortable cross breeze. So that's, that's all my hospitable announcement. But, uh, Joe, if you'd like to ask your first question?
Yes, I would, and first of all, thank you for your interest in becoming meaningful chief of our community. Thank you very much. Um, my name is Joe Novak. Um, I'm a lifetime resident of Adams, and I'm in my third term as selectman. Um, and my question to you is, in light of the ongoing protests taking place throughout our nation and abroad regarding the death of George Floyd by overzealous law enforcement personnel, do you see policing tactics and racial stereotyping continuing? Will the powers that be relent, or will they, or will a same situation arise again? I ask this because there have been other racially charged and egregious actions undertaken by police officers, officers resulting in the unwarranted death of black Americans. Still nothing has transpired to curb these happenings. Please expound on your views and discuss how racial profiling can finally be put to rest. I strongly believe that all lives matter regardless of the color of one's skin or any other attributes which one possesses. The world is big enough to accommodate everyone if the blinders are allowed to be removed.
Here, here, first of all, um, and that's a, it's a very long, complicated question, and I have, I have an answer. Uh, first of all, there's two things that your, your question addresses is police brutality and discrimination, um, and they have to be fought separately. I don't, I don't want to, because some of what you're seeing is brutality, and some of what you're seeing is nationwide over a period of time. I'm not saying just with the Floyd case, I'm saying what, what you're saying is leading to the national push here, and both of those need to be addressed. Um, your police department and in Berkshire County, we do a lot to address both. Um, particularly, uh, the chiefs have met with multicultural bridge, one of them, Hampton Van Zant. Uh, I work, I personally worked with her in our school district, uh, and it has to be countywide. And what I liked about the bridge program, uh, which is a nonprofit out of Great, uh, I think it's out of Great Barrington, um, and other districts have used it, uh, is that they take on an approach for the entire county. And to answer your question, that's how you deal with, first of all, the discrimination of people of color, and to help people get educated. I think there's a fear of talking about discrimination, and I think at first you have to have that conversation, and just what we learned at our committee is just meeting once a month and having that, bringing the people together was a great watching point. And after about, after about three months, and the first couple of meetings, there was some upheaval, you know, a lot of people didn't like having the uncomfortable conversation, and you, they helped you learn, uh, look at, get comfortable about being, you know, get comfortable being uncomfortable. You gotta have these questions, if you don't talk about discrimination, we're not gonna solve it. So they, they, they really do lay out the foundation of baby steps and kind of get everyone on the same page, and you start realizing when they're talking about discrimination as a white male, and I was a white male cop, okay, and with educators and everyone else from the community. They're not, they don't necessarily, they're not necessarily pointing a finger at you saying you. They're trying to get you to understand the idea and their feelings, and if you listen, um, you know, they have a lot to say, and a, and a lot spreads the, crosses boundaries. And it, it does you know. Um, and so we've been doing work with multicultural bridge in the first county for, uh, in the central Berkshire regional school district, uh, for about two years now. It is a process, it's not a quick hit and run. You gotta stay with it, and you gotta dedicate time to it. But, um, we were really gearing up, so they did, uh, they, they introduced some curriculum for the kids, they did some training, they had a great, uh, great play pipeline down in, uh, Great Barrington that we were all invited to watch. That really spoke to the kids, so they're, they're speaking to the kids on multiple levels, not just in the classroom, but after-school activities and, and some philosophies. Um, and, and workshops, they have great workshops, even with educators, but they, that was, while they're doing one front for the students, they're doing another front with the educators and the administrators, and then, of course, they had outside groups like the police department, and we were part of that. We were just getting to the point where we were gonna start having, I was, I was on the community outreach committee, that was one of my, my committees I was assigned to. And we were just starting, we're a southern town school district. It makes it a little difficult, because we are a lot of land area. So, and, and the more, as you get into the hill towns, there's just not the resources that you'd have, like a, a resource center to go to. So we're, we're thinking, how are we including people? Because what you're talking about really is inclusiveness. And so we were gonna have three venues, one in Dalton, one in Hinsdale, one in Beckett, where we, you know, not only announce, but we go in specifically invite people to attend, because that's, that's a big thing too, is people who don't feel that they're part of a community or a group, they're gonna show with a bulletin and a paper, you got to go and reach out. And we were gonna have, uh, short sessions, uh, maybe a movie night. We had these ideas, and then COVID hit, and, you know, now we're withdrawn even more. So I, I, those are some of the answers. It, it's very easy if you don't have multicultural bridge, all their work, like not in our town, it's a, it's a anti-discrimination pledge that you take. There is so much material that your town, no matter who you choose for chief, can go to and use. Um, but two things that I think is getting that type of training to your police officers, and I know your police officers here have added some of that. Over the last four years, Massachusetts has made sure that mandatory training in increments, and there's building blocks over the last four years of it happening. Um, so hopefully, uh, you've been seeing that in your officers. Um, and I think your officers have as much face-to-face community contact as, as we do in Dalton. And really, that's, that's what it, you gotta start just talking to people. If you sit in their cruiser and keep on going, nobody's gonna know you, nobody's gonna trust you. Um, and those interactions help. There's materials that we're starting to use, like I said, and it, and it helps that it's the school administration that's leading it, because that is the big, I mean, it's part, I don't know if it's the same here, it's half our budget, half of our town's budget. So, and they have, this is what they do. They teach, they, they set venues, um, you know, do field trips. So I'm glad they're leading it and bringing us that. I know it was a long answer, but it was an complicated question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Rick Blanchard. Uh, my question is, identify and discuss your experience in creating, reviewing, assessing law enforcement policy procedure, agency directives, or general orders.
Sure, that's, uh, so I've been working on that the last two years. There is a state agency called Massachusetts Accreditation Commission, and they help, uh, agencies, uh, big and small, to try and get to accreditation, which is the best standards. You may have heard CULIA, that's the national standard. They, we have mass accreditation. Um, they follow very closely with CULIA, but as you know, Massachusetts laws and Massachusetts government is very much different than everywhere else in the country. So, uh, our, you know, through Massachusetts police and Western Massachusetts, we all kind of gravitate to our, our entities because they do take into account mass laws which separate. So it's not that the best practice is so different, it's just you gotta, you gotta kind of pigeonhole it for Massachusetts, and they have standards and templates. In addition, the last couple of years, and this is, this is huge. The last time mass chiefs, which we all have these policies, I'm willing about the Billy Oberon School three, had the book that was two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, and it's just antiquated. Mass chiefs has had their in-house council, so it's, it's on a turn, writing and updating policies that are in line with the accreditation standard. They're then sending it to, uh, to the accreditation agency to vet it. They're sending it to mass training council, the police training council or the academy where we go to make sure it's in, in, in line with them. And then they're sending it to the executive office of public safety. Uh, what an ingenious idea. So then they're handing them to chiefs. They're coming out, you know, I mean, it's not that you can't comprehensively look at your own policies and say, okay, this is old. Um, you know, our policies still set patrol. Uh, I've changed all of it, you know, as a quick search and, search and find and swap with patrol officer. Um, you know, those are just quick things, but, um, but then you have to take what they, they send out, because it's, it's meant for all departments across the, across state. And tailor make it to your agency. You guys have three sergeants, I have one, uh, one on second shift. I have no sergeant on main office. Um, you know, I think there's a possibility, or there's been a lieutenant, that's like, you would wanna, who's the, who's the on-call supervisor? Who's the senior supervisor? Those, the tasks still remain the same, you just assign who does, uh, the line officer, the supervisor, and then a, a look for review. So there are standards out there, it's not as difficult as everyone sees, uh, things. Um, and they set up a self-assessment, then certification, and then full accreditation, so you don't have to look at the whole thing. You're kind of, I think there's, um, it's over fifty standards. I want to say it might even be close to seventy standards. So you can do like the first twenty, and you're in self-assessment. Once you pass that, you're working towards self-certification and, and onward. Uh, I don't know, I don't believe there's any other police agency in Berkshire County other than Great Barrington that's made accreditation. Uh, most of us are in the self-assessment. Um, I, I probably revamped close to two dozen policies in the last two years, bringing in my union president from, my supervisor, I only have one, but I have a great supervisor. And if it's a specialty area, um, if it's firearms or defensive tactics, I'm bringing those officers, and we sit down and we say, how can we best curtail this to our department? And when you do that from the onset, it's very easy to get these passed. I know you have mass coalition, police, we have mass coalition. I was actually the area's, well, vice president, uh, for many years before I got promoted. Um, if you bring them in early and ask questions, they give prior notice, and then ample opportunity to talk, most problems disappear, and you can ask these policies. So it's not as difficult as people think.
Just one quick follow-up. I'm not sure the situation in Dalton. Here, our charter designates the board of selectmen as the policy writers for the police department. We just got to see that maybe two months ago, got it from Rick. I mean, Rick, they go along.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, so we're in the process of looking at that, and we'll be looking to update. And as far as your supervisor, he's a hell of a guy.
Yes, he is.
Manager, a quick follow-up role. So as Rick mentioned, the board selectmen's involved in policy writing, updating, um, with, of course, it wasn't the top manager, right, the chief. Um, did your board selectmen have any role in the updating of your policy in Dalton?
So, yes and no. Uh, depending on what the policy was, there was an interest. Otherwise, if it was, because a lot of these are just like the domestic, uh, response to domestic abuse. There's been changes in the case law sense that was, you know, it's not reflected. So when you, when it was changing just law, it's, it's really sweeping to us. This is the law now, so you just kind of, you take out section A, and you put in a new case law. So on those type of things, it, there really wasn't a, a formal... and you put in a new case law. So on those type of things, it there really wasn't paid on a formal. And it is in mind, you know, it depends who you ask us. There was a, there was, I've served under many boards. And there was uh, a board that felt as though they they approved it, but it's it was written up in my contract and my job description that I passed all policy. So um, it's not that I'm against and and if it's in your charter that you pass it. It's just more, the way I see it, if you, look, if you're gonna discipline on policy or want discipline, why not bring you in so you clearly understand the policy before you make decisions on policy? So I have no problem with that. Um, it it was just convenient for me for time's sake. Uh, based on how town meetings are set up and public information that certain ones were just, hey, just so you know, the change in law, this was updated. Okay. Um, I, our form of government is a little different. We have a town manager. So my direct boss was my town manager. So I had that day to day. Okay, go ahead. Uh, where's the select board? Which more of the pointing fire?
Yeah, I'm personally, I'm, we're not looking, state law, state law. I'm just add a policy more or less, you know.
Well, I think.
Go wear the blue uniform with the cap and the.
I think the distinction that I, when I spoke with, there's a distinction between personnel management, personnel policy, and then there's street policy, shortage.
Oh, yes, yes.
Like the rules and regulations might be certainly, yeah. The rules and regulations, you want everyone on board uh, before they got approved. Again, I'm, you're asking, I have a little bit different thought. I have a little more of a way and I could go directly to my town manager and get things done. Um, so uh, but yeah, I mean, yes, administratively, how things are done in the police department, like my board would certainly want to hear about and weigh in on.
These are two members of the public safety committee of the board of selectmen. So they have a a a big interest in the policy for good reason.
Hi, I'm Jim Bush's voice chairman of board of selectmen. Uh, how much experience have you had working with a collective bargaining unit? And what do you consider the essential elements of elective labor management relations?
So my, just about my entire career I've had experience. So I think in, I'm trying to think what our our number is now that we're here we joined. But uh, we we were an association when I joined. We had, it was, we just had meetings and we didn't have an attorney or we didn't pay dues. And we we looked at Mass Coalition, at least who we have, so fits in. During that time, I served as a negotiator on Fort Tole. Then I I I left that, then I became the area vice president and went to Worcester County and served on the main board. Uh, and when I became sergeant, I felt as though, or when I wanted to become sergeant, I felt as though I should kind of distance myself from the dark side management versus labor. Um, and then when I became uh, on the manager's side, because I had come from that, I eroded. I I feel like I did. And I think I've had several presidents. I think they tell they'll tell you the same thing. I eroded the whole us and them dark side, you know. If you just give notice and bring them in early, sit down and have a conversation, you can get rid of a lot of problems. I've I've had one grievance in eight and a half years and it ended up favorable to me. And even though it was favorable, we still sat down afterwards and in fact argued, if you will. Um, but I've had experience. I also took, I have a master's degree and it was one of my courses where we got to do mock hearings. But I've taken part of grievances, I've written grievances. There's actually a proberated way to write grievances. It drives me nuts when unions just say, well, we want a grievance. Well, okay, you gotta tell me where in your contract, not just somewhere we think is wrong. Where in your contract article, what was in violation and what you vote to remedy? There's actually, you're supposed to have a component that actually, what's the remedy and what are you seeking? So a lot of times unions will just say, well, we want a grievance and select board of members will get the chief and go, what's going on? To say, grievance? Kind of panicked. I don't know why. It it's just somebody saying, hey, we disagree with and we want to sit down and go. Uh, so I've had select boards who my rating was based on how many grievances I had. So if I give the union what they want all the time, I'm gonna keep my head, you know, but that was that select board, you know. Um, so I, but to answer your question, I've gone through grievances, arbitration, um, civil service. Well, because we're civil, you're not civil service anymore. Uh, we are civil service. Um, I was just gonna go through my first civil service hearing, but it was withdrawn. And it was, it's all, doesn't have to go through that hearing for hiring processes. Um, but I follow uh, the rule. And as I was, as somebody in a hearing that I'm involved with right now, just said, I document everything, Chico documents and everything. Um, and it's because on inspection, I want the document that I'm doing for a hearing to speak on its own. So that you don't have to go find a paper over here or what's the doc. I try to make my documents speak on their own so that a third party comes in and wants to know what's going on. They're getting what, when, where, why, right in that document. I hope that answered your question.
I'm John DeWolfe. Um, what training and experience do you have in developing and implementing services and programs, courses, and or learning objectives that incorporate diversity?
So again, uh, we're all getting in state training through Mass Police Training Council. In addition, as you know, and I I traveled with Chief Darsa. Uh, chiefs go to extra training every year now in September for a three-day conference. A lot of it is coming through there. Um, as well as my two-year involvement with Multicultural Bridge and the Equity and Inclusion. I was actually invited by Ms. Van Tan to join the Bercher County Race Task Force. And I had gone to two meetings before COVID and and other things changed. So um, as far as, as far as uh, you know, my training, uh, it's really through M D T C and through my school district and then my work with the Equity and Inclusion and Race Task Force. Uh, developing programs, um, that was a committee. I I was, I was a little bit daunting that I was gonna be put on that committee because if you deal with educators, um, they have a pretty, they have a set way, not set way. They're used to doing education plan, let me say that. And to throw me in there, I was like, to write curriculum was a daunting task. And they said, we're giving you community outreach. I was okay with that because in my community, I I am that face where we're a small town and I grew up in Dalton. I'm that face everyone's gonna check with for a reality check or, hey, we're hearing rumblings that we're having Equity and Inclusion in town. What does that mean? I actually helped sponsor a book read. Um, we had it at local businesses and Dalton, Dalton CRA, I don't know if you're familiar with that. It's huge for us in our town. And so I set up a book read there. I actually had the tri- hole. I felt like my kids, I have two teenage eyes. I felt like they were doing a book report. Had the tri- hole stand and printed out, you know, told what the reading was about. Had the Not in Our Town pledge there for people. And it was a book, uh, it was a book read that we chose. Um, Why Are All Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria? And it's a great book. It's been a talking piece, uh, not only in our county, but in the nation. And even more recently, it's been pointed to. It's a great book. Um, the school district published those or purchased those and we set them up at the senior center, um, as well as the CRA. And I think we were gonna bring it across our seven town district, our school district as well. But I gotta tell you, the seniors really latched onto it. Um, they they enjoyed that book being there and having it there. So um, those are, those are things that you could do here is is just start getting literature from people of color to share at book clubs and book reads. Uh, and that book I mentioned is is a is a good start. But as far as curriculum, uh, I would, if I was here, and I know Rick was trying to do it. I asked the chiefs to see if we could have Wendellin and Stephanie Wright, her, her, her assistant. She's wonderful. The lessons they do, they kind of ping pong knock on one another and they beat off each other and you you always learn. I I went to every meeting and I always learned something. I actually paid out of my budget to have them come and teach uh, the officers in my school district. I I went to the Bercher Chiefs and asked last year if we could make it as part of our uh, extra training outside of what was mandatory. It was opted to support the district attorneys and it was a great course. They had a two, it might have been up here, uh, it was in North House. Uh, two courses for domestic and sexual assault patients. And so they felt as though it was important to support the new district attorney and the curriculum was kind of. Well, Rick was interested and he was thinking of doing the same thing I did. Uh, I invited the departments from all seven towns and we had, uh, I would say about seventy percent of the officers of all the towns in attendance at my, at my middle school and had a full day training. Uh, I gotta tell you, I had officers who were not, they were like, what is this about? And they came up at the end and thought it was great. Wendellin saw officer's faces and said, I'm not sure how this is gonna go by the end of the day. Like the person she thought might be the troublemaker. So she said, oh, like, he offered so many good things, you know. So again, bringing in those things, just that, if you don't take the opportunity and have the discussion, uh, you're not gonna get beyond your own personal biases. We all have implicit biases and people hear bias and you think that's a negative thing. No, it's just how you were raised. And unless you have the conversations to recognize what you're doing, you can't get beyond it and move on. Um, so as far as, you know, I know it sounded like it was more question curriculum. Rick was looking into having her up here as well on his own for the same thing. I don't know if that ever happened.
Wendellin, who's presented to our board about the pledge.
Yes, with Stephanie.
No, but Stephanie was actually a classmate of mine in a public policy class over the last year. So very nice.
Well versed.
Yes. Um, so Steph, I'm gonna ask you to talk a little bit about your budgeting experience. Um, and just for frame of reference, the police department's budget is one point eight million dollars of our roughly sixteen million dollar budget. So if you could identify and discuss your experience with budget, including any knowledge and experience that you bring to the table.
My budget, just to give you an idea, it's it's two pages. I saw your budget. I took a, I took a look at it. Uh, there's a couple of things I looked at before I applied. I I looked at the troll's contract, troll officer's contract. Um, that is really what dictates how you do this. It really, and everyone thinks it might be somewhere else's policy. You gotta follow the 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 contract. And it's very reasonable. It's actually a very good contract, I'm gonna tell you that. Uh, I don't want my, the officers in Dalton to see it because it's a very good contract. Um, but I looked at that contract. I looked at the chief's contract to see, you know, what would be expected of the chief. And I saw the budget, uh, or again, example of your budget. Uh, it's similar to what I have. It looks like, uh, for the most part, it's two sheets. Um, ours is split into an Excel sheet, which I do. Um, I am a hundred percent responsible for my budget and have that for eight and a half years. Nobody does it for me. The accountant doesn't do it for me. My administrative assistant doesn't do it for me. Um, I prepare and I live by it. I every, every, usually six months, I will make sure I'm on track because things happen. I know you guys are going through, you don't, I don't, I don't think too much for losing people, having a backfiller ship and send you, or one or two people academy and that cost. So as soon as something like that happens or an officer injury, uh, military activation, I know my budget well enough and it would take time to learn here. It's, you know, it takes roughly the year to to learn it, to know where it is. But I knew my budget well enough to know that we could weather one, uh, if I call that major event and I started to leave in fact. If I was, uh, if I was pretty, we could handle two. Uh, but anything more than that, I was gonna be going and asking for more money. Uh, but my experience is well versed. Uh, I daily, or weekly conversations with my town accountant. She's wonderful. Uh, she she's very particular on how things get done. Um, I think she had a resistance from chiefs in the in in the past. Um, I, whatever she wanted done, I changed my method and I did it that way. I know how to fill in the spreadsheet uh, with the equations to round it up or however you wanna do it so that it's forty, you know, forty hours times fifty-two weeks times the salary. And for your own review, you don't have to do the math to make sure my equation's correct. Um, it's split in under a salary component and then an expense. If I knew I was going over salary, I tried to, I would not go on a spending spree. And I tried to bridge the gap by bringing money from expenses over. Um, if we needed equipment, we tried to find grants so that we could, you know, pay for equipment with grants so that we could print expense money over before I asked for either an inter, interdepartmental transfer, by May, I think it is, or, you know, and then uh, you know, special town meetings. It's easier to do the interdepartmental transfer or you can go to the special town meeting and, um, I know the deadlines. I know when we can, um, get, you know, best practices on three bits versus have a battle hosting for capital expenses or services. Um, I have a contract that allows for the glow day allowance for a senior student. Um, we have, we heavily rely on reserve. We're allowed to carry five reserves. And uh, we tend to overuse them because some of these either are academy, military, these are. Uh, we have quite, quite a few reserves that don't have full-time jobs because we're offering them enough between working and details. And if they do details, they're making as much as I am, uh, as chief. So uh, but I I have very good knowledge. Again, it was one of my college courses for my master's degree. Uh, eight and a half years with experience with it. I've had to go last for transfers and overages. I was doing well for the first six years where I was kind of breaking even for an average. If I went over a year, I tried to save and return money uh, the next year so that I could always, in my finance committee, uh, I just always, always, well, first of all, they support the police department. They always trusted me because they know. I spend money like it's mine, you know, I, you know, I don't just think, oh, it's taxpayer dollars. I'm accountable to the taxpayers. I actually feel that that's my report card of my town. Now, how many grievances I have, I think my report card is, how do I do with budget if I go over? Was it reasonable? Did I, did I expect it? Did I communicate it early enough? Was my communication well? And fortunately, my finance committee and I did a lot wonderfully.
Thank you.
I tend to go long, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. Great.
Okay, um, as a lifelong resident fan, I have witnessed the evolution of our police department. I vividly remember as a young man, the officers walking the streets and addressing you as you passed by. The nightly rounds to stores to check on your security, the writing of tickets for expired parking meters. In short, the Adams Police had a visible presence and you knew who they were. Times have changed. They always do. No longer do the towns' police officers walk the beat. They drive their cruisers to accomplish their task. No longer do they check stores after closing. Instead, they shine a spotlight on the business facade and move on. No longer do they write parking tickets for meter violations. We needed to add a town position to make this transaction. I must admit that I cannot put a name to the face of all of our police officers. What is your taking, what is your take on policing, which I term resident friendly?
Sure. Um, all of what you said is is true, uh, in part. Not all the time. I don't like using words all the time or or never. Uh, in every community, in every town. And first, I must protect the profession and your officers. We are being asked to do so much more than back in your, the times you're talking about when they did. We are being tasked with so much more uh, in the community for a wide space. Um, it's not just enforcement anymore. We have to, we have to do social work. We're dealing with uh, mental health issues. That's probably predominantly, and I'm sure your officers, it's gotta be the same because it's the same, you know, where we are. Uh, they're dealing with things that take more time to get an outcome. Before, those quick tickets were the quick transaction. You could go on, be seen on on Main or Park, Park Street, you know, uh, all day long writing tickets. And a lot of towns love that. I can see it. They're doing something. So just because you're not seeing officers doesn't mean they're not doing things. However, it's our job to listen, whether it's a perceived or real, or it's just a perception or it's reality that the officers are not out there. If there's an expression of, hey, we would like to see this, you just have to respond. Um, in my, in my department, uh, it takes one citizen to call and complain about speeding and there's my neighbors who are on that street at least twice that week. It might not be every day, you know, there's certain side streets I get complaints on. I get, I get complaints on side streets that are dead ends and they're like, oh, they're flying. If I have an officer there, it's a waste of time. How many cars, you know, it's just, it's gonna be the the five houses on that street that are going over. There's no cars and then when they come home, you know, they're complaining about their neighbors. So uh, you have to pick and choose where you have the best uh, chance of of getting that visibility. But I have three, and I I've been quoted as from having these goals recently as well. Um, and my officers are sick of hearing them. I have three goals and they're very general. If you wanna keep me happy and you work for me, is think about work while you're at work. That sounds simple, but we all know that there's a lot of people that are distracted at work and not getting things done. You know, Facebook, social media, who knows? Uh, back in the day, we were. Uh, back in the day, when you're talking about when they walked feet, uh, I knew officers that did their, their daily and weekly errands, like going to the bank or the mail post office while they're on duty. I, I, I'm not a fan of police officers doing anything other than thinking about work while at work. And you can do that by asking too much. Well, should I or could I be doing right? The second thing I preach is share the workload. You have two officers on the street, I have two officers on the, on the street. If something's, uh, if, if something's going on, even if it's inside the department and it's a process and there's ten steps and you're watching your partner do step one and two and three and not at issue, then don't blink and ask for help. Hey, you need my help? You know what needs to be done. While I'm doing step one, you pick up step two else because we're gonna clear it off our desk and now we can get out and do some more. Also, if a big call comes in, we've kinda cleared our desk off for the small things. Uh, so you're always keeping up. So, my, my second goal is, uh, share the workload. Third is be part of the solution, not the problem. Um, one of my best qualities or my biggest strengths, I don't know if you're gonna ask that, but is problem solving. Uh, and why I say that is, is one of my goals. I see too many people focused on the problem and restate the problem and restate the problem and restate the problem and people just keep on going, like, cooking chicken. I find my strength and it's my job as a supervisor is to get everyone back together, moving forward towards a solution. So, I ask my officers, if something's broken, don't let me find it on my desk. Come to me and say, hey, the, the check engine light came on on this cruiser, but I brought it down to the service station that we have a contract with and they've already checked it and it says that this is what it needs. And I told them when my, because we have cruisers in rotation, so it has two days off every week. Um, on my two days off, I've scheduled appointments to begin, and well, here you go. Well, how wonderful, there's like, you know, there's, there's dozens of problems and I know you, you know, this, in a day, you know, you have all these, you guys just have the one department, you have all the more. Uh, dozens of problems that come up with it. I mean, that's really what our job is. It really is HR, human resource and problem solving. And so, what I, what I gravitate to is getting people to have, pass, looking in the rearview mirror, let's get to a solution, move forward. By the way, that solution, and this is where I, I, I hope select for, uh, understanding pleasing, particularly with officers responding to call. It may not be the best solution, but it was the best option available to us, you know? Uh, so, as long as we're moving towards a solution, it's gonna be better than where we are now, again. So, yes, I know it's not, uh, a full house, but we have the pair bases, that's what we're dealt. Let's go with it and it's a solution better than, uh, where we were at, so.
Hey, the police chief interacts with members, oh, I'm, no, I'm here. And the Adams Police, or Works Police with the Adams Fire Department, and its forest wardens, EMS, regional emergency management and state police, as well as community-based organizations. What has made you an effective collaborator in your current or past jobs?
Sure, uh, and, and that idea of inclusion, um, when, particularly with fire departments, police departments, there's always gonna be that, you know, competition or, uh, you know, what are you doing on our call? This is a fire call. But when things happen, you're gonna see, and, and I'm sure you see it here, we have, we have one of the best fire departments going and all, and, uh, they, when stuff happens, they're there and we all do our jobs. What happens in between is, it's nice if, if everyone gets along, but what you're talking about is the collaboration and I hope you're talking about collaboration when something's going on, when work's necessary. Um, I'm a chief who, uh, will always ask, uh, for other agencies. Um, I, look, if there's other chiefs in the county over a period of time and, and you may or may not know any of these, that didn't feel as though the sheriff should do anything other than, uh, operate the jail. Never been there. Uh, this is before, uh, you know, our, our new, uh, sheriff, uh, Sheriff Holder took over. But certainly now, because all of MEMA grants and FEMA grants are all for a collaborative effort. So, if I put on a, a grant at this police department, we're not gonna get it. But if we go to the sheriff, the sheriff has all kinds of equipment. So, why would you not want to reach out to the guy who, that everything we're gonna need if something happens? You gotta, and, and I have a good relationship, and this is actually one of my references, with the sheriff's department, but it's also the state police. Uh, I've never been one of those chiefs who gets upset that a, one or two, uh, state police cars are on either Route Eight in Dalton or, oh my God, they're on a side street. What are they doing on a side street? Hey, there's plenty of it out there for everyone to work. Um, one of my reasonings for BLAC, which I gotta, I'll take some of the credit, along with Mike Lynn, the chief of Pittsville, we were at a, we hadn't met for chiefs in years. The fire department does as well. The fire chiefs just have that system, the ICS system, and they work together as, in the county. We weren't doing it. And, uh, Sheriff Holder called us to the, the jail to have a meeting. And I looked in a room, it was the first time I'd seen this many chiefs, part-time chiefs, you know, small towns, we, and so I asked, uh, can we start this BLAC thing back up? And Mike Lynn and I kinda spearheaded it. And I, uh, I started out the president, but I thought he would be better, so I stepped down and became the secretary because he wasn't taking minutes. And what I did is after every meeting, I recognized that small town agencies with part-time chiefs, you know, do a day job, usually highway superintendent in South County. Like every highway superintendent out of South County is like a part-time chief. But I would email them, uh, even Chief Turner in Cheshire, I would email them the minute. If something, an announcement was made or a training, I was like, hey, here's the, every one of them reached out and said, this is, this is great. I had no idea what was going on in the county. That is happening so much more, uh, often and, and we were very much now, we mirrored the fire, fire department. But I, I have relationships, I have people on, I have their cell phone numbers right here, uh, for the people that surround in your community as well as mine. We have a mutual aid agreement, I'm sure you signed it, I know you signed it, the BLAC mutual aid agreement that allows that to happen faster than, uh, chapter forty master law, chapter forty-one, which is the mutual aid law, where you had to kinda go through some red tape before you can have that happen. We've already signed it, so the red tape is taken care of, uh, and, and just about every community in, uh, first county is a member. Um, so the, the local municipalities, I have everyone outside of, they know my, they know my name, I know that. Uh, the sheriff's department, we, everyone knows each other. Um, and I would, I would have to get to learn and meet your fire department if I was appointed. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we do. MEMA, uh, I'm on, as part of my position, I'm on our, uh, emergency management committee. Uh, and it's run by a retired chief, Dan Hilio. Um, and he's also by traffic commission, uh, so he's still kinda my boss. Uh, but, uh, you know, so I, I work well with, uh, I, I'm trained. Rick, I think Rick was pretty fully certified too, because we trained a lot, taken a lot of trainings. Well, I'm ICS one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred. Um, I'm NIMS compliant beyond, well beyond. I took many, many courses at Ford one day and just started taking courses. Uh, I have more training than was required for the chief's position in Massachusetts for ICS and NIMS and emergency management. So, if a fire, the firesign talks to me in those languages, I know what's going on. I've requested equipment from the county sheriff, so I know it's there. Um, you know, so it's needed. Uh, we have, you have an agricultural fair and I know you, um, a, a, a special night downtown, but I think you also can move it next on the green, don't you? Yeah. Um, I know you have, and you have the Thunderbolt and the Rainbow, um, you mentioned my, my sergeant. Uh, I gave it to him, but he, he got me addicted to it, is the incident plans. And actually now, what we just have our own, uh, incident management plan, uh, emergency management plan pro, prior to these events, just in case anything happens. And we shared them with the fire department, emergency management, and all the contact numbers were there. We shared them with our police, so we have the Dalton Carnival, um, annually, and we would do it for that. You know, so any kind of defense, we have a landing zone, our regular ordinance, so somebody has, anyone has to be in command post. Um, and now, we have the training and capability where all that's electronically through MEMA on websites. And so, last Dalton Carnival, I uploaded it on there and it tells them, you say, during this week, this is our event. And it, it takes it from, uh, like a, across the state that they're looking at. It puts it in a different color, so it's coming up in their scene. And, and you just have to remember when your event's done, you take it out, so it goes, it goes lower. And they categorize them, so, uh, yeah, there's collaboration going and, and, and I would continue to do that here. I would go meet your, uh, emergency management director and, uh, fire chief and, and see what we can do.
Just as, as a follow-up, my question is kind of a lot of, uh, to see if you can play well with others. We've had in history, emergency management director calls meetings, you know, happens at the fire department. And at the time, the chief refused to go to the fire department. And when it's held at the police station, the fire chief refused, at the time, it's not the current.
Yeah.
At the time, refused to go to the police department. So, these meetings definitely, who you're going because of individual pride, I should say.
Yeah, so, um, I, I say this at my police department, again, we don't have to, it's awfully nice if we get to be like each other. But we're not being paid to like each other, we're being paid to, to a job. And so, if you have an emergency management meeting and part of, that's part of my responsibility. I don't, I don't care what the relationship is, that's what we're adult professionals, uh, to still show up and, uh, put your best foot forward. And, uh, again, you never know, the more time you sit at a table together, maybe you found out that you had a grudge that was, uh, in your own mind, maybe projection, if you will, uh, and, and you can't get by it. But, um, you know, I, I will let you know that in Dalton, uh, we used to train a lot more with the fire department. It has, it has changed, um, but I am at every meeting I have to be at, school emergency planning council, that's a big thing here, and I know you guys do that here with the state police, uh, Trupanata, we do the same thing. Um, and I have more tools, I feel like I'm drilling every week. I'm like, ah, even my, even my kids say, oh my God, I can't do another drill. Yeah, um, 'cause we also, I go, I lead my jurisdiction, I can help other towns. But, um, I do my, I fulfill my responsibilities. Uh, I have an extreme work ethic. I, I don't like idle time. I will find work if I don't have work. Uh, that's why the policy thing is right on my alley, just whether it's not something right on my, on my table I started in the policy. So, I have no problem fraud, reaching across disciplines to come together and meet. Um, and it's kind of the problem I have going on in my police department is, is someone of my officers weigh how much they get along with somebody at coffee at a coffee shop versus, well, what are we actually gonna do? You know, so they'll, they'll say, well, I like that person, yeah, but we're trying to get, you know, there's too much coffee, you know? It's awfully nice that we can get, like, oh, I don't have coffee with that person. I think, you know, you refuse to have coffee with me, that person had coffee, it's weird. It's like, no, it's beyond us, you know? We're here to do a job, it's awfully nice that we can get along, we're here to do a job. So, I, I don't hold grudges, um, I have a floor, and it's, let's just keep moving forward. Things are gonna happen, it's not always gonna be pretty times, we're gonna have ups and downs. You hire a chief not just for the good times, you hire him for the bad times and you gotta kinda just move forward. Uh, and then there may be a time where it, it, it's time for those department heads to move on. This is one of the reasons I'm here today.
Uh, in thinking about regional and collaborative nature of police chief position, what is your experience in working for the district attorney's office?
So, um, I have good experience with both. Uh, I was much more involved with the last district attorney because, well, let me explain. I say that because, uh, during, during his long tenure, I, and that's actually where I'm at, it's a great. Um, during his tenure, I worked for the task force in the building, so I had much, and I, and I ended up getting, uh, my, my time there increased, started out Monday a week to more and more until the time I was full-time for an entire year. So, I had, uh, a lot of interaction with a lot of AGAs, um, senior staff and the district attorney, uh, who was giving a recommendation to become chief. Um, since the new regime, I believe I'm, uh, in the county, I think I've had, uh, more contact and support with, uh, to, to attorney Andrea Aron than, than others. And I think she would agree with that. I've gone to press conferences on her behalf, um, with the juvenile diversion program and she asked me to speak, uh, but that was, and she also had the, uh, the domestic violence, uh, re, bookery. I read the book and, uh, she had a night at the colonial with the author, gave on a presentation. Officer, uh, Chief Harson went as well, uh, and we went together. So, um, you know, I, any initiative she puts on, I try to, uh, I try to get on board. I mean, she's one of the chief law enforcement officers in the county and sets policy. Uh, I can tell you, not everyone liked the district, district attorney gave us the policy, but, uh, we knew he, he ran the program. And so, it doesn't surprise me that not everyone may agree with Andrea Aron's policies, but it's what we have to buy on. I have good experiences with her, I have good communications with everyone. She, we, we follow each other, come up on and ask questions or, uh, anyways.
Thank you. The position of police chief as far as a high degree of accountability, what does accountability mean to you in a legal sense with regard to data and metrics in terms of relations with the community?
So, um, well, well, it truly for her when you said data and metrics. It's kinda one of the things I'm going through right now in my time, is accountability and using data and metrics to support, uh, my initiative. And there's an objection to that initiative and whether it's correct or not. Uh, matter of fact, if you, uh, I had a hearing, uh, and, and last Friday and was, the opening statement was, she was, she was going of checking on boxes and following law. I, I get there's a personal side to it and I'm going to bring in people that will show. Matter of fact, the select board, uh, last night got fourteen letters from fourteen past employees uh, in the last ten years, uh, who said they left because they went to a full-time position at the Swinlocker or the state police or higher paying department that was higher paying and was not because of me. And, uh, they, uh, all fourteen, of fourteen letters in the last ten years said that they support my and my sergeant's leadership and training. Um, so, I am about metrics, however, this is part of what I'm going through. You have to understand that numbers don't account for everything that's being done. So, I'm about accountability. Uh, when I became sergeant, my department wanted me to be sergeant because they said, now we're gonna have accountability. And I laughed and I said, until it's with you. No, everyone likes it when the other person's being accountable, but nobody likes to take their medicine. And I, uh, believe in remediation, another popular term that's being used right now with me, rather than punishment. Uh, and if there is punishment, you better have your dots, uh, your eyes not and your T's crossed because, uh, there is a lot to be said about a union agreements procedure and the choice of our well, within our social service arbitration. And the time to worry about it isn't after you've done it, it's before you start the process. And so, I am about doing IMC, uh, it's changed names so many times, but I, I feel so, Rick would probably, I'm sorry, Chief Harson would probably be referred to by the old name of IMC. Is that that advanced management system that you have, is that what most of us in the county have? And it allows for an analysis and I do those. But there's a time, uh, where you have to look beyond those, but there's a time that, yes, you have to hold the commonwealth close. And my, my reason for saying that is, the, the default that, uh, the staff has, IMC prints is incident reports. It's a poor measurement because I had an officer who, for everything he went to, did an incident report because he was on midnight and he just wanted to show he was active. I'm not saying that's bad, but other people said, I'm not gonna do a full incident report. The same information can be done in a data log entry within an extended narrative. They both did the same thing, they both documented it. However, one got a stat, so incidents is a bogus stat. Then there's arrests. Well, I'm not saying you can't have proactive arrests, you certainly can. Nick, Nick Huster, Nick LeVette, which is his name, he goes out and he gets proactive arrests. All day long, I'm nature, he's creating, but on midnights, how many cars, I'm, I'm certainly more coming through Adams, but at Dalton, how many cars come through Dalton on midnights? Not many. So, a site, uh, an arrest or citation stat is not gonna be nearly as much as where commuter, uh, town main streets bumper to bumper all day long. They're gonna have more likely to be active and proactive activity. Whereas on midnights, it's really gonna be reactive with that reactive call. It's more likely gonna be very active and bad, so it's gonna be a domestic. So it's gonna be a domestic, a bad car accident, you know. So the numbers are gonna be lower, and so you have to keep that in mind. You can't compare midnights with dates. Also days, uh, certain people on days, like, uh, like the officer says, might be doing a lot more vehicle while another officer is doing a lot of the the L R C V E calls, that takes a lot of time. So we try to weigh, what do the stats mean now? What are our faults that I'm finding in the the year I'm going through now is, we posted them at the beginning of a bi-monthly annual review. We do a bi-monthly annual, annual review, because we also do yearly assessments. And we were told that during annual assessments, which is another data piece driven, uh, bit of information for accountability, we do an annual assessment when, uh, I took a course on how to give assessments. They said a tip fault is to only, uh, touch base with your employee during your last, you know, the, the last annual assessment. And then give them, say, well, you weren't doing this, and they say, well, you told me, you told me I was correct. So I took that back, and I said, as a sergeant, said, why don't we do that? So why don't I do a bi-monthly report with numbers, which is statistical driven, saying, hey, this is what your shift looks like. They know what it means. If there was zero arrests, well, there shouldn't be zero, I mean, I'm sure something was going on. If there was four on midnights for the bi-monthly, okay, you know, that's, that's probably what the call line was. You can't factor crime, and you shouldn't, because it's either, they're either walking like a doctor and boxing like a doctor, we should make arrests, or we shouldn't be doing it, it's not walking like a doctor like a doctor, just for the sake of a stat. So I believe in accountability, I believe in stats, they have their place in their time. Um, and it's what I'm going through right now is, uh, I being told that I remediated based on, uh, when, when a person had better arrests in citations paths than another person. And I will get activity. And for a long time, people, my, my own attorneys said, I don't, I give it up. Activity can be so much more than arrests and citations. You can do a building check, they have to do building checks every day, they have to log them. You will find the captive activity that midnight officers do on midnight shifts and help are building entry checks. It's amazing how many doors they find, and they, and they can't just be visual. I went out and said, hey, what's, what's we, oh, that's visual. Well, anyway, I'm doing a visual check. Do you, do we, do we have buildings disappearing? Honestly, like, no, that building's there. No, get out of the car, walk around the building and shake the door, and I wanna see more being physical than me. Now, I have written, written on saying to midnight, say, uh, we're having a cold snap, it's gonna be below degree weather, stay in your cars. I mean, it's just absurd to go out and do building checks. Uh, they do, the, the old regime, I always thought of this, when you said they do their spotlights, on rural buildings, you can see the slide lock, I still like to get out and shake the door. So the old members said, hey, look at this, you're okay. All right, they didn't, you don't even have to get out of your car, you can just look at the, the deadbolt, and you can see what the spotlight, so that, that's what they're doing. Um, but, no, I, I said, get out of your car. It's kind of this question that you just asked me, is if you've seen me in the paper, this is exactly what I'm going through, is should I have held an officer accountable? That officer saying I held him, I held that, that officer accountable based on arrests and citations? Um, and I'm, I'll go further and answer this, cause it may come, come up in a question. I'm a hundred percent with the, uh, I, I a hundred percent back my decision to remediate this officer three times. Two times in two thousand seventeen, one time in two thousand eighteen. We had no problem in two thousand nineteen, until that officer resigned and go to another agency. And it was clearly documented with, uh, I gave prior notice to that officer, had the union representation there, clearly documented it correctly, including audio recording of the meeting, so it can accurately be heard later, which no one has listened to those recordings yet. And, um, it is clear that it was not about arrests and citations, it was about the, a lack of activity and decision making. I'm halt. Um, remediate question, I can also, comes up later, but it fits right in, because it's the heart of the matter, what I'm dealing with is weighing that accountability, and I'm a big accountability person, do you work well or? My last one is, is I said, I said, do work well or should work well, uh, be part of the solution of the problem is, when, when you can, if there's no calls, three activities, a minimum of three activities. Go out and building search, service summons, check at a gas station at closing time, we, we close early, everything closes at that. Go at closing time and just check on them while they're cashing out. They're gonna, and, and they do, they love it. And what we find out is, building that relationship, going over on this question, building that relationship, they still calling and saying, I think something's going on. This guy's walking down Main Street, we're a small town, we're talking about Main Street. And so they'll start actually reporting stuff to you, that goes back to your being seen, being heard. So just getting out of the car and, and an activity can be just at least a community interaction. You can watch on the cruiser, you can stop on the first aid kit. Um, that's exactly what I'm going through now, but may look like something else.
But the, just follow up, uh, to the chair, um, the situation you're in, you feel that if there were more, uh, direct policies and normal procedures in your department that, um, going through this process, that you wouldn't be able to, uh, refer back to that under that former select man's rules, he's down to Dalton?
Yep.
Uh, would you be able to forward and tell who you're following with the, how, what the procedures?
I, so activity, um, really isn't gonna show up in a, I mean, it does show up in the rule of regulation as far as your, uh, uh, now you're really testing me here, um, response control, control area, or you're, uh, what's a fall under? It is in there. Um, again, I didn't discipline. I remediated two years ago. There was, oh, let me say this, so after the union representation, I got no verbal complaint from the officer or the union, a written complaint and no grievance from remediation two and three years ago. So I don't, I didn't bring, I, I, I don't, I'd rather not discipline, I'd rather remediate and get, and that person in two thousand nineteen operated a house they should. So I feel so my remediation worked, uh, when that person left, didn't like how I did things. So, and, and according to the grievance procedure in the contract, it's, you have five days. Um, I also have several officers coming in Friday for the second part of the year, including the union president, that are gonna testify that it was clear why I was doing it, and that their own observations will back my reasoning for it.
And, and prior to, uh, the situation that's going on, how did you keep the board selecting? I know you work for a top manager, right? So that's a little bit different, we'll get here, but how do you keep, or how does top manager keep the board selecting up to date on what's happening? Because the police department, you know, when you come to budget time, and you, uh, you come, uh, when the police department looks for support from the board, leaders in the community, how did, how was the communication, how, you know, was there measures factors discussed, uh, things about here? Was there any communication with the board selecting?
So part of the reason we did the bi-monthly reports is in case we were asked, we were never asked. Um, I did attend, uh, I, I attended select board meetings when I was on the agenda. I, I had, again, my, my major interaction daily was with, uh, Tom Anderson. Um, he had department meetings every month, and as part of that, he, a long time ago, requested that we do, uh, a few bullet points of what we talk about so that you can share them with the select board. So I made exactly that, every month, I said, this is what we completed, this is what's new, uh, good or bad, or what, for budget, staffing, training, um, commendations, uh, hey, these are some good cases that happened. I didn't get detailed investigate, investigations, because they're open and ongoing in there in court. And it's just a big no-no, it's just to go in a public forum and talk about it open case. Um, the rule of thumb was, uh, with the chiefs or the police departments, when they had the ball, it's perfect from wrong. When we had the ball investigating, if we need something, we needed to reach out to the public and talk, we could. But once we kind of handed the ball off to the DA's, and they didn't, the DA's office really didn't speak about it, it was kind of our, but once we handed off the ball, we were supposed to shut up and leave it in the hands of the attorney's office. So that's different, an ongoing case, and sometimes select boards, when it's a big case, they're like, hey, what's going on? That's the convenience of having the town administrator, uh, and, and having the trust of him getting, uh, some detail to be able to satisfy your, your, your knowledge. Um, I had a big case, I got, actually, I got, uh, the select board gave me an award. Uh, in two thousand five, we had the biggest seizure of drugs, and, uh, I, I just was lucky, but they wanted to acknowledge me. And the case was unknown. And it, it really, we, it really, we just had gotten the arrest and filed the paperwork, it was really too new. And they wanted to do this public thing, and I said, no, it's not the time to swipe the ball and high five each other, we just started this, like, down the road if you want to be there. And so they did, they, they honored mine, and I was only a, a patrol officer at the time. I was a chief, but, you know, there's a time to kind of add that moment, but I'm an officer, like, I, we have a commendation system. Um, we didn't have this before, I was chief. Um, when I was in the association, we didn't have commendations, so I made the officer year, of the year award, and it was in, uh, an association thing that we did every year. We nominated people, and then what everyone recognized is, we sat around at the table like this, all the officers, and we read nominations. And what they realized is, that was actually an award date, was if Dave Ross can get around and actually say nice things about his other people for time. Um, you know, John Bishop did an office, so we had an officer, uh, there's no longer relatives in the private sector. He took time, even if he wasn't nominating somebody, just to say, a snippet about everyone, he usually used comedy with it, and, and really set the tone, so we let him go first. But, you know, somebody ended up winning the award, well, when I took over, I copied, um, there's really enough, you don't have to re-act the wheel, you can just, I can, I, you can have a good career just copying people. Uh, North Hampton had a commendation system, and they're accredited. Um, I, I cut and pasted, and so now people, when people get life saved or CPR, they get a pin in a, in a letter in their file, they get to wear the, you know. Some people have so many pins, I only allow them to wear five, because it just looks gaudy on their dress uniform and thing. So I give them a, it's a badge holder with five spots, and like, you know, they got four, you pick the five that mean the most to you, but we're not gonna march to the parade with you. You know, but, you know, so I always updated them on those good things. Cause again, he's gonna hear bad all day long from every department, right? Who's the, so we're trying to include those good things as well.
Good, thank you.
Question, yes.
So, um, that actually ends our formal questions. Um, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to, um, share with us anything that we may not have asked you, that you really wanted to make sure that we knew about you and your candidacy, um,
Yeah, I, I just.
Before you leave the room, we wanted to make sure you have a chance.
Sure, I, I, I guess I just wanna say that, um, I greatly appreciate this opportunity. I, I know that I knew is in the paper. Um, I am confident with my decision. Um, you all know that decisions need to be made, there's times, not everyone agrees with it. And, uh, sometimes you just have to agree to disagree and move on. I love my community, I'm very happy with the relationships I've developed, um, with seniors in the school district. A letter of support from the school administrators to my select board, um, you know, I, I get that, uh, my, my media coverage, uh, does raise questions. But I, what I wanna say to you is, I'm more than just a chief, um, I'm a father of two kids in, in, in high school. Both, uh, wanna go to college, and, uh, I'm willing to take the risk, uh, to recognize if a good thing has come to an end. Without, I, I feel as though I'm gonna have a good outcome. Um, and, and I'm going to work towards that. I'm, I'm, that's why I went public, I went public with my hearing to show the community that trusts me, that I feel like I'm making a good decision. But I feel, I sat down with my family, and I feel that, uh, the risk is worthwhile to try this interim, not just the full time. I did put in for the full time, but this interim. It's a risk, um, but I, I think, no matter what the outcome of this risk, uh, I've made a good choice. Now, uh, if you offer me this decision, I would wanna honor my contract. I respect my community, and, and, and I wanna honor the contract with a thirty day notice. I would have to do thirty days. Um, so I would just wanna let you know that. Um, I do not plan on just walking out. Um, and if, if I don't get this, I have a year left in my contract, then hopefully I, I will try again for a full-time position. So I understand you guys have a tough situation with COVID and budget up here, and, uh, you know, other, other things on your plate. So I just wanted to leave you with that, because if, if I don't get the offer, um, you'll see me again. Uh, I just, uh, my family sat down, we talked, we thought it was worth, worth, it was risk, uh, and because Adams did catch my eye. Um, I, 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 for some reason, Dalton and Adams Chiefs have gotten along. Uh, I don't know if you know John Hartels, he's a, he was, he was a selectman, and now he's on a school committee, but he was a chief. He would ride with Chief Perrow to the chief's meetings, and they just got along. Chief Perrow was part of my selection process for sergeant, and boy, was he tough. I squared ninety-two point five and placed myself first at my department with the civil service test, and he's still in that, in that era, or the interview, was tough. Uh, he was part of my chief selection, so I, when I got chosen for chief, we drove together, and then when he retired, Rick and I drove. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of wondering who am I gonna drive with, and, uh, and then if I get this, wow, who will I be driving, you know, so, but anyways, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, you know, I've talked a lot about being a chief, I wanted to give you a little bit of insight of who am I, and why I'm here today at an interim position. Uh, I, I love Dalton, I, I never envisioned, uh, I would leave. Uh, but sometimes you gotta know when to save land for everyone, and, and that's why I'm here. Okay?
So with that, do you have any questions of us? We have a few minutes.
I, 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 I don't, um, other than, if I leave, I don't have eligibility to come here. Is that a two more thing? Is it part of this position? That hasn't really been discussed yet, uh, I don't think it was contemplated for an interim position, but that can be discussed, uh, with the select board in terms of a contract.
And then, um, so I did share with you when we spoke on Monday about, uh, kind of an aggressive timeline that we're looking at to honor Chief Tarsel's, uh, retirement of a mid-July date, uh, and you did share with me the thirty day, uh, notice that you would need to be given. So we, we are looking at, and Chief Tarsel has agreed to, um, be available, past his retirement date if needed, um, so we do appreciate that. But we are looking to, um, finish up interviews this week, so we're interviewing tonight, uh, tomorrow and Friday night. Um, and hopefully, uh, discussing this next week, being in touch with each of the candidates, uh, because there is next week. So I think that's kind of where we're at, uh, with the process. You know, you have my contact information, and you have Jay's contact information, if there are any questions that should come up, um, before we do contact you. But I don't know if there's anything else from anyone, but we ended right on time. I'm very proud of all of you. Yeah. You're supposed to, we're trying to get to know you. So with that, um, Jeff will let you get on with your evening.
Great.
We're just gonna probably wrap up our meeting here. It's, uh, very nice to meet you, if we were not in COVID times, shake your hands and, and thank you for being here. Thank you. All right. So there isn't really anything else from the core. Um, what I will do is I will take the question sheet that, uh, we used, and I will put them in the order, um, that we actually ran through them tonight, and put copies in each of your mailbox for tomorrow night. So we do have, um, two more candidates tomorrow evening. Tomorrow is five, I, third meeting time in a six o'clock interview, does that seem right?
I just know the year is five thirty, no.
I know, I was like, well, if there's any, um, I have to see, we were trying to, um, cover any licensed items that came up now and then, but it's tomorrow, the third, or eleventh, sorry. Five thirty meeting. Um, and it's a reopening of parks, is the only thing that's on there, in case there was an update or just some information to, to talk about, because it was something that John had mentioned, to have a discussion about. So I did put it on the Thursday agenda, but, so a five thirty start, but the first interview is at six. But if that person shows up early, you can always start a little early with that. Okay?
I was kinda wondering if we were gonna get through the first one.
Oh, we did, okay. But hey, we're still recording at the moment. So if there's nothing else to come before us this evening, if someone would like I think so, okay, but hey, we're still recording at the moment, so if there's nothing else to come before us this evening, if someone would like to make a motion to the jury. Thank you, Jim, and John, all in favor?
Hi, ready?
All right, all right, that is unanimous, thank you very much, thanks Deb and Ed for uh hanging on.